This meeting of the Margate Planning Board for Thursday, June 25th, 2020 is called to order. Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have an official roll call, please?
Tom Collins.
Here.
Clem Waslewski.
Here.
Richard Patterson.
Here.
Michael Cristaldi.
I'm here.
Jim Gallantino.
Here.
Margaret Gubernalty.
Here.
Craig Palmisano.
Here.
Stephen Giasecki.
Here.
Remi Pelosi.
Hmm.
Joseph Thejeralimo.
Here.
Ron Gruppo.
Here.
Michael Richmond.
Here.
This electronic meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, and all rules and procedures which govern a regular meeting shall govern this meeting as well. Our goal is to have this electronic meeting run smoothly and as close to a normal meeting as possible. By joining this meeting, you have agreed to allow your activity to become part of the public record. The platform will be muted only during portions of the meeting where there is no public comment. During the public comment portion of the meeting, please mute yourself when not speaking so as to give other participants their right to be heard and to keep a proper record of Public meeting agenda is posted or has been posted on our website. If you want to speak, you must first... Can I have to hear it again? Somebody have a bird in the background?
Not anymore.
Thanks. If your microphone is in muted, your picture shows up, and then the board cannot see exhibits. And if I can see your picture, then it's a problem that your mic, even if you don't hear anything, your microphone is muted. So if you want to speak, you must first state your name and ask to be recognized by me. Once recognized, you may make your comments in accordance with the public decorum protocols.
Can you see us on here anywhere? No.
Only one meeting attendee, remember the public...
Yes, I do.
At a time.
Okay. Keep going, Rich.
Only one meeting attendee or member of the public may speak at one time only after stating your name and being recognized by me. Remember, when not speaking, place your device on mute so you don't interrupt the other speaker or the public meeting. Please remember to speak clearly to limit background noise. Please isolate yourself as much as possible to ensure there is no unnecessary background audio coming through your device. If there is excess audio coming through your device, or if you fail to observe public decorum protocols, the host shall identify such, and your device may be muted to ensure there are no interruptions. Please be advised that the board reserves the right to disconnect any member of the public who does not observe proper rules of order. Lastly, your patience and cooperation is greatly appreciated. This is a new platform for most in attendance. We thanks you in advance for your cooperation. I'd like to hear a motion for approval of the minutes of the meeting of May 28th, 2020.
I'm at that motion.
I'll second.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Motion passes. I'd like to hear a motion for the approval of decisions and resolutions number 24-2020, Luke and Debbie Duff, Cream, and number 25-2020, Mike O'Neill.
I'll make that motion.
Good job.
I'm second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay. Leo, you're there, right? Leo?
Yeah, Rich, I'm here. As far as the resolutions, all in favor, aye. Any nays?
No.
Okay. But yes, I am here.
Again, I've received phone calls all day today about our hearing about the high-rise where the greenhouse is tonight. That's not the case. We're not, we're hearing about the water park. We're not hearing about the greenhouse property. Roger, would you explain what we're hearing about the greenhouse property, just in case that's what anybody's going to hear about?
Well, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You want to...
Oh, yeah. Well, I'm going to swear, Roger, and Mr. McLaren, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, not just the greenhouse property, but the whole, we want to revisit the master plan in regard to the hotel overlay, and I'm just giving everybody a heads up that this is coming at a future meeting date. And also, and...
So you're just giving a heads up that it's going to be discussed at a future meeting? We're not going to discuss anything tonight?
No. There's some zoning ordinance changes that we've been talking about for a while, and that they're going to be included in that, like, say, for instance, front yard setback, but I can discuss that in new business. But specifically for the greenhouse property, no.
Okay. That's what I meant, nothing about the greenhouse property.
That area.
And that will, that will take place on their new business at the end of the meeting.
Correct.
Anything else, Roger? Continue.
And, Rich, my suggestion would be, I mean, if we're going to discuss that area, that hotel overlay zone, or what was it at the time proposed, you know, when we get to the public comment of the hearing, maybe we should go directly to the discussion of the ordinances. And it's my understanding it's going to be a very brief discussion, but we should have that discussion first, and then if there's going to be any public comment, we should have that after, and hopefully try and limit it as much as possible, and Roger can answer as many questions as possible. Nothing has been introduced by the governing body. We're not voting on anything tonight.
That is correct. Just a heads up what's possibly coming down the road.
You ready, Roger?
I am.
Okay. The first case is Margaret Day, 9420 Amherst Avenue, block 528, block 4, and block 529, lot 1, located in the WSD District, seeking site plan approval for an in-water aquapark with proposed seasonal inflatable play, taxes and water payments are current, and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied.
Rich, I'm going to interrupt you real quick. I apologize. On the agenda, we have to appoint a subdivision committee. I don't know if you got the revised agenda.
Um, yeah. Yeah.
Rich, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Mr. Chairman, it's Roger. Do you want me to give you a brief...
I don't have the right agenda here. I don't have that on there. We are appointing or reappointing a byright subdivision committee.
Correct.
I think Mike Cristaldi has been on the committee. I think Mike Richmond has been on the committee. Is that true, Mike Richmond?
Yes.
Okay. And then we're going to appoint Ron Gruppo to that committee.
I'm off.
Are these the... Argument?
I'm sorry, Rich, Mike Cristaldi, I'm off then.
You're on, Mike. Two Mikes.
Am I on the subdivision, or...
Yes.
The byright? I'm still on?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. What that is, is we decide, we no longer bring byright subdivisions before the board because they must be approved, so just a committee of three meets to sign off on those subdivisions.
Right. So it'll be Mike Richmond, Mike Cristaldi, and Ron Gruppo will be the subdivision committee, which the chairman just appointed.
And is that one year, Roger?
Yes, we have to do that every year. Myself will be involved in that committee.
Okay.
Right. And Roger is the zoning officer.
Correct. We've been doing this for years. We just have to update every year with the new board member.
We only need three signatures on that, Roger?
Three board members plus myself.
Okay. We'll make sure they get signed by everybody.
Correct.
Okay. Sorry, Rich. Back to the Margaret Day application now. Thank you.
Okay. So Roger, I think you've already been sworn in.
Correct.
Thank you, Board Chairman, Board Members. As you are well aware, this application has been on the books or been talked about for about several years, and here we are. So my report is based on the application of Margaret Day, 9420 Amherst Avenue, block 528, lots 4, 4.01, block 529, lots 1, 1.012, 2.013, and 3.01. It's fully contained in the WSD District. When this application first came in, it was partially in the riparian zone, or the AR zone, and they're coming in for preliminary and final major site plan approval, and this is the planning and zoning report. Also referenced in my report is a report from the engineer from Remington and Vernick that the...
Roger, I can't understand you with the background noise. I'm sorry.
Somebody must have their...
Keep going, Roger.
So the background is, this is a variance-free application. It's a byright site plan. Again, the applicant will discuss that, but I agree with their assessment. The background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinance of the city of Margate in order to construct a new marina. Actually, they're not seeking any relief. They're just seeking site plan approval. For a floating aquapark in the WSD Zone and previously the riparian or AR zoning district, either zone permits water-dependent uses as approved by CAFR and/or NJDEP. The applicant, the project has approvals from both NJDEP and US Army Corps of Engineers for the use and for dredging. The site was and always has been for at least the past 50 years, as I can recall, a, been occupied by marina or other water-dependent use. The site occupies no uplands and is all waterward of the bulkhead. Again, I gave the preamble about the change in the zoning a couple of years ago, and the zoning change mapped. That was clarified. I'm not going to go into detail about that. The location will have a promenade which will be incorporated into the master plan under the city's Phase 1 Sustainability Plan from several years ago, as you recall. The construction of the promenade is likely to commence within 12 months, so the bulkhead, as the bulkhead is being replaced at this time. The plan will help link the beach and bay as part of the pedestrian corridor along Washington Avenue to the Amherst Avenue Bayfront District. The bayfront areas were viewed as viewed as another commercial district, which has seasonal events each year to help boost the area. Page two is the zoning schedule for the WSD Zone. As you can see, all bulk standards are being met. The minimum lot area required is 4,400 square feet. They have almost 62,000 square feet, so I don't see any bulk standards. Off-street parking requirements, a marina requires .5 spaces per boat slip, and a marina service facility is in a waterfront recreational use, one space for 100 square, 175 square feet utilized for commercial activity. Again, the applicant provided a zoning analysis, and I did the same thing with the, with the same results. Basically, our ordinance allows that if you have a deficiency in parking spaces today, and you have a deficiency in parking spaces in the future, or as proposed, you do not have to meet the same amount of deficiency in parking spaces. So if you go by the zoning rules, they needed 17 parking spaces based on the previous use in boat slips. The area and boat slips that they have now is 17 spaces, so it's a net gain, so no additional parking is required, so no variance is required for parking. The applicant shall demonstrate the need for the use of public space for this project in a type of agreement they, the applicant is seeking. Again, a portion of this project straddles publicly-owned land, or actually land that's underwater, that the city owns. As a condition of approval, they need to have an agreement with the city either by lease or by purchase to use that land. That's, that should be a condition of this property or this application. Section 2 on page 3 are the documents reviewed. They're, they are quite numerous, but I just want to point out that there are several of note. One is the US Army Corps of Engineers Public Notice and Permit, CENAP-0P-R-2019-0922-45. If you see that 20 times fast, I'll give you a present. Date at May 13th, 2020. Also of note is NJDEP Permit 0116-03-009.3, LUP190001, which is a waterfront individual permit in water and water quality, water quality, quality certificate, dated August 21st, 2019. Also included were tax information, deed, a certified property owner's list within 200 feet, a major site plan report by Remington and Vernick, which usually during a site plan, the engineers' report takes over. Also reviewed were the plans for the aquapark. One is the new aquapark sheet C101, the Highland Group, dated February 28th, 2020, last revised June 9th, 2020. The second page of that application was the new aquapark, which is a survey of the premises, dated February 20th, 2020, last revised June 3rd, 2020. Section 3, variance is required, no variances are requested or required. My comments are numerous, and I think we should turn it over to the applicant at this time to have a, provide his application to the board members and to the public. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. McLaren. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for being on the call, on the video. It's good to see so many people finally getting out again after our quarantine. Yeah, as Roger had indicated, what we're doing tonight is coming in for a variance-free site plan application for Maggie Day to construct and finish a in-water aquapark directly on Amherst Avenue. And we certainly concur with just about everything Roger just said. This is not an application which requires any variances. This is solely to meet your site plan ordinance. In addition to Maggie, who will be testifying, Mr. John Halbruner, who is a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, is going to testify regarding the fact that this application meets the requirements of your site plan ordinance, and we're seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval. So having said all of that, and having read Mr. McLaren's report, as well as the report of Remington and Vernick, I'd like to swear, Mr. Halbruner, or have Mr. Manos swear, Mr. Halbruner, in to discuss what we've submitted, the fact that the project already has New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection permit, an Army Corps of Engineer permit, a dredging permit. The state and federal, federal government have already given us their blessing. This is just now to formalize the project with the city of Margate for site plan only. For anyone who thinks that this is a variance project, it is not. For anyone who thinks there is something going on on the water side of this that somehow not in the applications and the numerous public documents that have been submitted, it is not. We're not seeking anything from the board other than what your ordinance rightfully allows us to do. Okay? This is Day is fully cognizant, and there are very, very many people who are in favor of this, and there is a small vocal majority who are against this. Whether you're in favor or against it, this is all allowed by law. So I'm going to have Mr. Halbruner walk us through that, because I think that's a very important standard. Okay? Site plan permitted by law. It's not something we really need a lot of permission, other than you to look at what we're doing and see if it satisfies your own ordinance. If it does, respectfully, this is something that has to be granted. Having said that, I'm going to ask Mr. Halbruner to please unmute himself, and if Mr. Manos could swear him in, we could get started with the testimony.
Sure. And just right before, before I swear, Mr. Halbruner, and just so everyone's aware, specifically the board members, since this is a site plan application, nine members will be voting on this application, which requires a majority vote of five to pass. And Mr. Halbruner, if you can hear me, if you can just state your name and business address for the record, and I'll swear you in.
Absolutely. My name's John Halbruner, spelled H-A-L-B-R-U-N-E-R. I'm from the Highland Group, whose office address is 701 West Avenue, Suite 301, Ocean City, New Jersey.
And can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
John, good evening. Thank you for joining us via our virtual format. I know you've got some very impressive credentials, so for a lot of people on the meeting who may not know you, if you could just state for the record what your credentials are, where you're employed, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Manos and the chairman of the board to accept you as a licensed professional architect, or engineer, and an expert in the field of engineer.
Absolutely. As you've indicated, I'm licensed in New Jersey as both an engineer and an architect. I've been practicing in the Atlantic Cabeau County area since graduation from Dressing University in 1991. I've been before this board on several occasions, and before virtually every board, planning and/or zoning, in Cabeau, Atlantic Counties at some point over the past 30 years. I am the chief operating officer and chief bottle washer of the Highland Group, the firm that provides the engineering services for the subject application. Again, I've been in the practice of engineering and architecture in this county and this state since 1991.
We will accept his credentials.
Thank you. John, very impressive, and I mentioned architect and engineering, but tonight, we're just talking about engineering as it relates to the in-water structures, some of which are already in the water, the docks and pilings, along with the in-water play equipment for Mrs. Day's water park. So if you could, just at the outset, walk us through what Maggie had tasked you to do, the plan you prepared, and then if you could comment on the application that was submitted as a byright site plan, and what we're ultimately intending to do this evening, and then well into the future.
Absolutely. Before I dive too far into that, is it possible to have display control so I can refer to copies of the plans that were submitted as part of the application? If not, I can proceed. This might be more clear if I'm able to refer to the drawings. Excellent. Okay. Are you able to see my screen now? Are you seeing a copy of the sheet V102, which is the survey?
Looks very good. Thank you.
Okay, good. What I'd like to do is start just by describing what the existing conditions are. Now, as you just mentioned, very recently, the past couple of days, some of the new docks have been put in place, but the survey that's on screen now depicts the conditions, what we'll call the pre-existing conditions. And it shows that the, if you can see my cursor, I'm circling the area where there were set of floating docks that originally housed 34 boat slips. The parcel that we're including with this application is that parcel with those boat slips. Then there's a separate, removed parcel slightly to the east that shows open water areas. Our new site is going to encompass both of these portions and the space in between. In aggregate, that space will be 61,875 square feet. It's a very large area. And I did mention that we're going to be filling the space in between. If I zoom in here briefly, oh, let me. There we are. Part of this is city-owned, and we're going to be seeking a license or to purchase lot 5, and then above that, open water area, that's going to encompass into the overall site. To show you the comprehensive site now, I'm going to refer to the site plan, which was on sheet C101 of the submitted set. You'll see that we're now encompassing that entire rectangular area with over 61,000 square feet. Proposed development is quite simple. All the floating docks are to be removed, and we're going to construct a new floating dock that basically encompasses a horseshoe area to form a barrier of protection around the perimeter of the site, within which floating bouncy play equipment for the aquapark will be situated. So we have a perimeter floating dock of six feet wide all the way around, inside which will be these floating devices. There is a fixed pier alongside the future promenade, existing bulkhead along Amherst Avenue, that will serve as the public entrance. So people will come in off Amherst Avenue, walk down to this fixed pier, down another fixed pier, to a larger area where there's a ticket counter. They'll be greeted, handed a wristband for the duration of their stay, one or two hours. Then they'll proceed down the ramp to then get their required life jacket, and then proceed down to the entry point into the play park. Mrs. Day will give you a little more testimony about the inner operations of all that, but you see now that the primary reason for us needing to encompass the lot owned by the city that we're going to get rights to, and encompass the entire thing of floating dock, is we're providing a protected area within which the children and patrons can play without fear of being interfered with by boat traffic in the nearby channel or adjacent marinas. In terms of the physical improvements, it is that simple.
And, John, as you're aware, the physical improvements of the docks are configured in such a way, now, in the actual water, as they're shown on your plan, although based upon a discussion that Mrs. Day had with her neighbors, and to have as much room as possible for the boats on either side, the docks themselves, on one side, are in approximately 10 feet from where they're shown, and on the other side, they're in approximately 7 to 8 feet from where they're shown, basically making the area that you've referenced slightly smaller to have more room for boat traffic in and out, and also to have a little bit of a safer area so that the patrons at the water park, if for some reason they're in the water, don't have far to go between either getting on a dock or getting back on the play equipment, correct?
Correct. The floating docks, which are oriented in the north-south direction, here and here, were originally proposed to be much closer to the property boundaries. In discussions with the owners and operators of the adjacent marinas, we've agreed to relocate those docks closer to our center, increasing the fairway width for maneuverability between our new floating docks and their marina patrons. I also ought to note, which I didn't in the description of operations, you'll see we're indicating boat slips along our floating docks. Those are boat slips that are for patrons, that we expect a fair number of our patrons to come by boat. On the west side, we expect those to be by jet skis, that'd be limited docking for jet skis and personal watercraft. On the east side, more conventional pleasure boats. But again, those slips are there for patrons. We're not operating as a marina. These aren't, they're not slips for rent, but for patron use.
And Mrs. Day is going to describe this as well, but the difference, as you're aware of it, I'll explain to the members of the public and members of the board, between a patron slip and a mooring slip or a transient slip, is that if people decide to arrive by boat or personal watercraft, those patron docks are for patrons of Mrs. Day's business only, and when they come, they'll come by boat, and they'll leave by boat, but they're not going to come, tie up their boat, and go anywhere else, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So the plan that you're describing has an overlay of what had previously been there. And I do want to talk about that a little bit. At this point, we're going in with a water-dependent use that's taking the place of the prior water-dependent use, correct?
That's correct.
And previously, there was a marina without bathrooms and without any parking, and the site plan that you've submitted is also a site plan without any bathrooms and without any parking, correct?
Correct. But it's noteworthy that, as Mr. McLaren had indicated in his opening statements, the parking demand under the proposed condition mirrors that of the pre-existing condition, so there is no increase in parking demand. 17 spaces were required originally by the former marina, and as proposed, were required to provide 17. So there is no increase in the number of parking spaces under the proposed development.
So the change from what was there to what is there now, in your professional opinion as a licensed professional engineer, doesn't trigger the need for any parking? Is that correct?
Well, it triggers the need for parking, but not at a rate any higher than what the former use did. There was a demand of 17. Excuse me?
I'm sorry. Continue.
The former use of marina with 34 slips under the... The former use of Marina, with 34 slips under the city ordinance, would have required 17 parking spaces under the proposed development.
Zero.
And they had zero, correct. So there's a demand of 17 parking spaces with zero provided in the existing condition. Similarly, in the proposed condition, there's a demand for 17 parking spaces and zero provided. So we're not increasing that degree of non-conformity.
So under the city's own ordinance, zero parking spaces as a result of this, keeping the same exact number from prior development to this one, zero parking spaces is what we're looking for and what we need in order to do this development, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we've got the docks that are in, no parking requirement, no bathroom requirement, no bathrooms shown on the plans, and a by right site plan. So far, is there anything that we're missing with regard to the lack of variances that would otherwise be needed for this site?
No. I mean, the use that we're proposing is one that is entirely water-dependent. It is a use that is permitted by the NJDEP, as evidenced by the permit that we already have in our hands. So we certainly satisfy the use requirements for the area, and there are no other applicable bulk requirements that we haven't already addressed. So we are fully conforming in every respect. This is a variance-free, or otherwise known as a by right development application.
And the applicant, Mrs. Day, doesn't own any landward property on the Amherst Avenue side of the bulkhead, correct?
That's correct. The entire project area is waterward of the bulkhead. The right-of-way of Amherst Avenue directly abuts us. So it's public land right up to the bulkhead, and then Mrs. Day's property right after that.
Okay. What I'd like to do, ladies and gentlemen of the board, is have Mrs. Day testify now regarding the operation, the daily operation of what she proposes in the water. If the board has any questions for Mr. Halbruner, clearly, he's going to be on the Zoom, and he's been sworn in. But if it's okay, I'd like to turn it over to the property owner now.
Sure. If Ms. Day can hear me, you can just state your name and address for the record, and I'll get you sworn in.
I can, yes. Margaret Day, 10521 Third Avenue in Stone Harbor, New Jersey.
And Ms. Day, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Maggie, how are you?
Hello. How are you?
I'm good, thanks. We have a lot of people here that are probably very excited to hear what you have to say.
Good evening, everyone. I just might real quick address Mr. Patterson and the board. I fully appreciate the time that you spend. I too sit on public boards, and I fully understand the demand on your time. And I just want to say thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Maggie. Why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself, a little bit about your operation in Stone Harbor, but most importantly, what you intend to do with your operation in Margate, hours, how are you going to keep it safe, and very importantly to everyone who's listening, the idea of not having bathrooms and also not needing parking. Hopefully, everybody's pulling up on their boat, but they're going to want to hear it from you now. So if you could, let's hear what you have to say about your hopefully soon-to-be ongoing operational water park.
Sure. Thank you, Eric. Thank you very much, John and Eric, for, with all the preliminary information for everyone. I just wanted to start with hours of operation. Our hours of operation would be approximately Memorial Day to Labor Day, and that will mean that the inflatable equipment will only be in the water during that time. During the off-season, we do remove all of that, and the only thing that will remain in the water are the pilings and the docks.
And the pilings and the docks are there now in their configuration, as they're going to remain continuously, correct?
Correct. And I wanted to just give another little bit of information. You did touch on the fact that we spoke with our neighbors and moved our docks in on both sides, approximately eight feet on one side and 10 feet on the other side. I just wanted to correct that a little bit, because during installation, we installed the pilings on the outside of the docks, which actually provided each neighbor two and a half more feet. So the side that we were providing eight feet actually turned into 10 and a half, and the side that we were providing 10 feet actually turned into 12 and a half, because we did go respectfully by our word, and we measured to the outside of the piling instead of the outside of our dock. So there's that. The hours of operation, to get back to that, is approximately Memorial Day to Labor Day each year, and daily, 9:00 AM to 5:00 or 6:00 PM during that time. The way that the operation works, when we open, it's first come, first served. There are no reservations held. So people come, and they choose how long the children are going to stay. They have an option of one hour or two hours, and they pay for that time. And at that moment, they are given a wristband that is a specific color that indicates when their time starts and stops. They will then be escorted by one of our supervisors from the fixed pier down to the floating docks. And group by group, people tend to show up with brothers and sisters and cousins. So some groups are five, some groups are two. So they will be escorted down to the play equipment by one of our supervisors, and they will be put on the play equipment by group. During coronavirus, with the COVID-19 restrictions for social distancing, we've had great response and great outcome with our current location in Stone Harbor, with families completely understanding what's going on. And they've all been really wonderful in cooperating with the social distancing rules. We take them down one at a time, you know, brothers and sisters, people that are coming together. And they get on the equipment, and they move outward into the water, and then the next group goes on. So when their time is up, they will be informed by one of our lifeguards or supervisors by the color of their wristband that it's time to make their way to the dock. So they will either walk off the equipment or jump in the water and swim over. Well, they will be helped out. There's ladders, and they will be escorted back up to the fixed pier. Well, they will take their life jacket off. We'll back up one second, because I did forget the life jacket. Life jackets are required for every single patron, whether you're an Olympic swimmer, or eight years old, or 80 years old. Life jackets are required for every single patron. So they will take their life jacket off once they get up to the fixed pier. That will be rehung. They're all sized. They are all labeled with sizes. Make sure that they are fitting properly, and they are adequate flotation for each person. And then they will exit the fixed pier. And that will be basically, it's very, very simple. That will be basically the operation, the daily operation of the park.
Now, Maggie, very important, of course, is this issue with bathrooms. And clearly, we've been all touched by COVID-19 in one way or another. And without wanting to put bathrooms along Amherst Avenue, or have porta-pots that would otherwise cause people to perhaps come in contact with others they don't want to come in contact with, we have chosen, as part of this application, not to have any bathrooms, correct?
Correct. No bathrooms.
There's no porta-pot on the plan, and there's no porta-pot on the dock, correct?
Correct. No bathrooms, no porta-pots on the dock.
Are you going to be selling food, or drinks, or anything else that would generate trash on your docks?
It's another wonderful thing about the aqua park. We don't generate any trash. We're not selling any food. We're not selling any drinks. And we're extremely environmentally friendly. We are removing the gas and oil from the water, and we are replacing it with environmentally equipment and children playing in the water. So that's wonderful. We barely need a trash pickup. I mean, we have no trash. We don't generate any trash. We don't make anything, and we don't sell anything.
One of the things we had talked about earlier with Mr. Halbruner is that you don't own any land on the Amherst Avenue side of the bulkhead, correct?
Correct.
So as far as people coming to visit your establishment, if they're not coming by boat, and they're getting dropped off, or if they're riding their bikes, or if they're walking, you have no control over how they get there and how they get home?
I don't. Similar to the beach, when people are dropped off at the beach, no one has any control on how they are dropped off at the beach, or how they are dropped off at the bay.
So there's not going to be a designated spot? There's not going to be anything that the city has to monitor, other than its normal traffic on Amherst Avenue, to ensure that people get to and fro safely? That's up to them, just like it's up to them to figure out how to use the bathroom, correct?
Correct.
Good.
And again, I'll draw that reference to the beach. There's many, many beaches all over New Jersey that do not have bathrooms, and people figure that out. So we...
And it's also the place where, when you're talking about changing area, the beaches are fairly big, and unless someone goes to a designated porta-pot, there aren't any changing areas or designated drop-off spots at the beach.
Correct. Same idea here. And I just want to reiterate that we've already been operating an aqua park for 30 years, and our customers, for the most part, show up in their bathing suit. They hand their flip-flops to their mom, and their towel to their dad, and they say, "See you in an hour." So they don't require a changing area. We don't have a changing area in our current location either, and we've never needed one.
No different than the beach, that there's no changing area. It's just people make do because they would like to go to the beach, just like they would like to come to your establishment, hopefully.
Correct.
Okay. Now, as far as trash goes, you mentioned it earlier, there's no need to have a dumpster on-site or any other trash can, correct?
Definitely.
So it's basically as environmentally sound as you can make it. People pack in and pack out what they have. They get there any way they can. You're not providing bathrooms. You're only providing, similar to the beach, a recreational facility in the water within your stated area for people, children of all ages, to bounce around and then leave and get home. And that's up to them, how they come and go.
Correct. Yes.
Just by way of the background before we got to this hearing, you did have an opportunity to adjust your docks based upon meetings and discussions with your neighbors. And the way that would work presumably is that someone pulls up on a boat, there's a designated boat side. If someone pulls up on a jet ski, there's a designated jet ski side, and you're going to have employees telling everyone where to go, so that there's a really safe area out in the water, and that nobody gets confused and goes to the wrong place, correct?
Absolutely, yes. Just to touch on safety for a minute, you did ask me to hit on that, and I will. First off, the construction and the design of the dock system is our primary source of safety. The reason that we constructed that and designed it in such a manner is to protect the swimmers and our customers from not only boat traffic, but current. So the dock system is situated, so it houses all of the swimmers and the inflatable equipment. The second line of safety is our life jacket requirement. We require life jackets for everybody. So there is no flotation issue. There's no swimming issue. There really are no rescues, per se, because everyone is floating, whether they can swim or not. And then the third is our employees. So we have lifeguards and supervisors that will be positioned all the way around those docks, not only for different angles of sight, but they will also be positioned inside the aqua park for assistance out of the water, or anybody that needs help, or simply just to have fun with the kids and make their day a little bit better. But within that employee structure, part of their duties, yes, will be to make sure that they are docking any patron watercraft properly. So that watercraft on the north side will be, is specifically just for personal watercraft, so wave runners, and on the south side is just for boats. But we are going to first and foremost dock everyone on the outside first, just because it would be a safer spot to be, and it would keep the fairways completely open. If, per se, we have more than what we can fit on the outside, then we would start pulling them onto the north and south sides.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Mrs. Day is clearly going to stay on the call as well, but I think she's addressed Mr. McLarnin's request for comments about the operation, the dates, summer only, the water equipment doesn't stay in after the season's over. It doesn't go in. Prior to that, we're really talking about a daylight hour operation, which doesn't increase anything over on the waterside more than a Marina would have and did in the past. So certainly, she can answer questions as need be. But unless anyone has any specific questions now, I'd like to go back to Mr. Halbruner.
Eric, is there going to be any lighting at nighttime when it's closed?
It's Rich Patterson. Maggie, would you like to answer that?
Currently, we have no lighting plan, as we're not going to be open at night. But it has been spoken about, and if we find the need to have lighting or security at night, we will do that.
Thank you.
Rich, Joe DiGiallo, will have a question.
Go ahead, Joe.
Yes. My question is, the boats that are going to come up to drop off people who are going to use that facility there, is there, if they park their boat there for, is there a timeline that you don't want to be there for an hour, or for two hours?
Well, Mr. DiGiallo, it would be for as long as there are patrons, because it's a patron slip at the Marina. So if someone decided to come all day, and the kids were in the water, or the adults were in the water the whole day, then they could be there as long as they would be using Mrs. Day's facility. Once they were done, then they would have to go.
Can I ask a question, please?
We have time for public comment after this, so you will have a chance to ask questions. Please mute your microphone again, please. Thank you. Okay, Eric, you wanted someone else to talk?
John, I just wanted to go back to Mr. Halbruner, please. John, are you unmuted?
I am, yes.
So you're familiar with the City of Margate site plan ordinance, correct?
I am, yes.
And you've heard the testimony of Mrs. Day, and you've given testimony yourself, correct?
Correct.
And based upon your licensure as a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, is it your opinion that the applicant has met the requirements of a preliminary and final major site plan as required by the City of Margate, including all of the aspects laid out in the McLarnin report and the Remington and Vernick report that we've reviewed?
I do, yes.
Based upon your opinion as a licensed professional engineer, are there any variances that are necessary in order for the City of Margate Planning Board to grant site plan approval that Mrs. Day is seeking?
No. As we've said several times before, this is known as a by right development. No variances are required.
Thank you, John. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Mr. Halbruner, Mrs. Day, we believe has established the requirements under your own site plan ordinance for approval. We've addressed the issues in the Remington and Vernick report, Mr. McLarnin's report. I would, at this point, turn it back over to the board for further questions. But again, respectfully, once the submission requirements are met, since it's by right, the board should see fit to grant the approval.
Eric, John, and Maggie, it's Roger.
Have any questions?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Roger.
Who?
Roger.
Go ahead, Roger.
The guy that sits here. Maggie, how many employees are you proposing at any one time? I didn't catch that.
I'm sorry. Did you say how many employees at any one time?
Yes.
And are you including the employees that are selling the wristbands?
Yes. How many employees would you have on-site?
Including everyone that is there for us, is what my question is. Or are you just wondering how many are going to be out in the water?
Yes. How many employees would you have there on-site, whether in the water, on a float, wherever, at one time?
We're looking, we're proposing right now 16.
Okay.
Rich, I have another question. Joe DiGiallo?
Go, Joe.
What is the maximum capacity at any one time of people using this water park that they can handle at once?
Well, that is up to the square footage of inflatables that go out there, which is not completely determined at this moment in time. But we're thinking 75, 100.
Thank you.
But under today's...
Go ahead, Mike.
You've got people there from 9:00 to 5:00, and you have no restroom? Is there any rule on that?
It's not up to us, Mike.
It's not up to us? Okay, just throwing it out there.
No signs, Eric?
Mr. Cristaldo, we do have some ideas about that. We're currently discussing a couple of things with joint property owners. Nothing definite yet, but again, as Mr. Patterson said, it's something that we're going to have to work out, because clearly, we'd like to keep our employees happy, and that could potentially be a problem. But that's something that Maggie has been in discussion with other property owners, and we'll deal with it as we need to.
Thank you.
Eric, I have a question.
Who's that?
Clem.
Clem. Okay.
Who has a question?
Clem does.
This walkway... This walkway goes around the perimeter--
Who's speaking? Eric, do you know who's speaking?
It's Clem.
Go, Mr. Chairman.
Clem Wozleski.
Clem, okay, Clem. Go ahead, Clem.
The walkway that goes around the perimeter of this whole operation encloses a very large area of water that doesn't seem to have any assigned function. Does anything happen in there?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I didn't hear Mr. Wozleski.
Can you hear me now, Eric?
A little bit, yes.
Am I using this microphone right?
Yeah, you are, I don't know why.
All right, I'll try again. Within this large rectangular area enclosed by the U-shaped walkway, there's a large area of water that seems to have no assigned use. What happens in there?
It's just extra-- I'm sorry, Maggie, go ahead.
Currently, nothing happens in that portion of the water.
It just goes--
If I could be a little bit of clarity--
That was your question, right? There's no assigned use for that water, no.
Are you speaking of the water adjacent to the bulkhead, between the bulkhead and the play area?
No, no. The water enclosed by the U-shaped walkway.
Correct. Out at the edge--
The inflatables go in a small portion of it, but the rest of it is unassigned as far as I can tell.
Correct, it is.
Okay. This walkway that goes around, are there any guardrails on the sides of it?
There are not currently, but there will be.
Okay. The people that pull up in boats that want to use the waterpark, do they have to walk all the way around back to the ticket counter and then go back--
They do.
And go back out to the inflatables?
Yes, sir, they do.
Okay, yeah. All right. I do share Mike's concern about the restrooms, though, is 16 employees on a-- How long are your shifts?
The shifts are not the full day. Currently at our operation, we have three different shifts for our employees. They're younger and they do not work nine to five during the summer.
How long? How long is a shift?
We have not determined the shifts for Margate yet, but it's something similar to nine to one and one to five.
We better hire people with a lot of self-control.
We're currently discussing restrooms, sir.
That's all I have, thank you.
I have a question.
Shelley, we're not to public portion yet. When we come to public portion, you'll have your turn.
Okay.
So--
Is John done?
I believe John and Maggie are both finished. I just wanted to, before turning it back over to the board, respond to a couple of comments I think some board members had. Bathrooms, as everyone is aware, have always been a problem where people who live across the street on Amherst don't want to see bathrooms. It's a brand-new promenade of potentially a beautiful pathway being built along Amherst and bathrooms aren't necessarily the greatest thing anyone would like to see. So, the thought process was we will deal with the bathrooms. It's not something that the city has control over by way of this site plan approval. So, when we talk about whether or not bathrooms are necessary, whether Maggie has made a deal with someone else to use their bathroom, whether the employees will be able to forego using the bathroom for a certain amount of time, that's really not something under the purview of the planning board. Bathroom's something Maggie has to deal with and she will, but unless the members of the public across the street and the City of Margate would like to see porta pots along the beautiful new Amherst Avenue, it's something she's taking very seriously and she's going to address. So, to the extent anyone asks questions about bathrooms, we can certainly reiterate the same thing we've already said, but there's no plan for them nor is there any reason to question continuously what her employees who haven't even been hired yet are going to do. Additionally, Maggie understands that more than anything else, she is becoming a part of something here with her development along Amherst Avenue, which we believe will be of great success. She has received threats from the public. She has had people on Facebook say they're going to shoot her inflatables with a BB gun. We've had to discuss things with the police about whether or not she would be safe with this project, with people against her trying to stop this from happening. There was even a gentleman who posted something that said he would do anything and stop at nothing to shut her down. And it's really quite ridiculous that we're talking about a by right plan, that she's trying to open up a business during the midst of coronavirus and contribute to something where children and adults will have something to do and there's such a viral hatred about her possibly doing this across the street from Amherst Avenue. I can't say this enough, this is a 100% allowable use. What she's asking for has to be granted tonight. People, the public may not like it, my answer is, don't go there. It's not open at night, it's open for limited hours during the day, there's no reason to deny this. I would like the chance to rebut, as I'm sure people are going to have questions and maybe I'll even have further questions, but we have to stay on track as to what we're seeking here. And I've said this a number of times, say by right site plan, that once the ordinance from the City of Margate is met, Mr. McLarney and Remington and Vernick say it has been, this is something that has to be granted. So, I'm going to stop with that and then I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, if there's anyone else from the board, or I'm going to open it to the public, does anyone from the board have any questions? Okay, now, going to open it up top?
Yes, just a quick question for Eric. Just so I'm straight, the applicant is paying for the bulkhead and they're paying for the dredging?
Mr. Collins, not the bulkhead, the bulkhead's going in from the city, the applicant's doing the dredging, paying for that herself. And, Mr. Collins, just to follow up, she does have a dredging permit. I didn't reference that earlier, but in addition to NJDEP and Army Corps, she has a dredging permit, she intends to start this probably in October.
Okay, thanks.
All right, I'm going to open it up to the public. It sounds like there's a lot of people that would like to talk. I will recognize you one at a time and the rest of you can mute yourselves. The first thing you have to do after identifying yourself is to be sworn in, then you can make your statements. If there's a lot of people, if someone has already made your point, I would ask you not to repeat something that's already been raised by another member of the public. And I would like you, I'm not going to cut anybody over to three minutes, I'd like you to try to keep it to a three-minute limit.
And Rich--
Somebody would like to reply themselves, I would call in.
Rich.
Al Whitesman.
Rich, hold on one sec, Rich.
Whitesman, you're recognized.
Rich.
Mrs. Whitesman?
Okay.
Yes.
Mrs. Whitesman--
Thank you.
All right, hold on a second. Hold on a second. Rich, we'll go with the Whitesmans first because you called on them, but I think generally our typical practice, I know there, I believe there's at least two attorneys online representing property owners within 200 feet. After we go to the Whitesmans, let's go to the attorneys and then we'll go to the rest of the public.
I can't see that. So, you call the members of the public.
I can't see that either. I just happen to know that there's two people online, but let's go with the Whitesmans and then we'll see if there's any attorneys representing property owners who want to speak. Does that make sense?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
State your name and address, Mr. and Mrs. Whitesman.
Okay, Mimian Hall Whitesman, 9608 Amherst. I just have two questions--
I need to swear you both in. Can you, are you both speaking or just one of you?
I will only speak.
Okay. Please raise your right hand, you swear, affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, thank you.
Okay, just two quick questions concerning operation because I understand this is going in and I wish some luck. The hours of operation were stated as starting at 9:00 AM, but I don't understand what time will the pumps actually start and the noise factor of the pumps is something that no one has addressed and I really would like to know what time the pumps have to start. Are they starting at 9:00 AM?
Mrs. Whitesman, what do you mean by pumps, mayor?
Well, this is a question, what is used to inflate the inflatables and how much noise is involved in that process?
Hi, Mrs. Whitesman, I can answer that actually for you, no problem.
Yeah.
The equipment is, remains inflated overnight. It does leak a little bit of air and it does require a little bit of air each morning, but it's no more than 30 minutes and they're not very loud. So, the pumps would not start until 8:30 and--
Okay.
--before we open and sometimes they don't even need air, sometimes they're okay. So, it wouldn't be every day.
Okay, because I did see at one point that it would be deflated every night, so what you're saying--
No, they don't deflate every night. Nope, we only deflate if there's a really strong wind or storm coming.
Okay, thank you. The next question is, given the noise factor, because I've been a resident there for 24 years, so I have lived through all the changes of the street--
I understand.
Do you plan to broadcast any loud music?
No.
Because that would be, okay, thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
You answered my two issues about the pump, but it will not start before 8:30 if you feel, and I imagine that you will be starting them every day, that's my, you know, something as a need. I'm sure that there will be deflation on a regular basis. So, you're saying never before 8:30?
I'm not going to say never before 8:30. If there's, if something happened or if there was a storm or if we had to deflate or if we thought there was going to be a need for a longer time of inflation, but it would never be before 8:00 AM. It never takes more than an hour and it would most likely be a half an hour.
Okay.
It's not like--
Just one more little bit of information that might put your mind at ease, we are located next to the nicest boutique hotel in all of New Jersey called The Reeds at Shelter Haven.
Excuse me, I actually went to your site last year, so it's actually familiar and I did speak to homeowners and everything.
Just want to let you know, we never ever had a complaint from any hotel guests that we woke them up or that our noise was too much or, and believe me, I'm in close contact with the management and the owners at The Reeds on a daily basis and they would tell.
Yeah, we spoke to the owners, but the music, so thank you for not trying to cover up the noise with music because that would--
Okay, can we move on to the, is there any attorneys out there that would like to speak?
Mr. Chairman, this is Chris Passendo, I had a few questions and so a couple of comments, if I may.
Okay, Chris Passendo, speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eric, I just had a quick question. You had mentioned in your preamble that the distance, I guess, adjustment on the Blue Water Marina side was, I think you said seven to eight feet and Mrs. Day said that the degree of separation was approximately eight. When we were in our discussions and negotiations, the agreement was the original 12 plus an additional eight, not approximately eight. Can you or Mr. Halberner confirm that there is actually 20 feet of clear space between the common property line and the outermost portion of the piling collars?
Yeah, John can address that. John, if you don't mind, just weighing in on what Mr. Passendo just asked, that the distances have in fact been measured and the distances he's referring to are in fact correct.
Yes, unfortunately, I'm not able to turn my webcam on, apparently there's a limit on the number of people, but can you hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you.
Okay, good. Yes, the docks were just put in the past couple of days. We have not done a confirmation as-built measurement, but if you refer to the site plan as amended and submitted, there is clearly 20 feet between our property line and the docks is the planned dimension. So, that is entirely consistent with your agreement. And as Miss Day had mentioned, you've actually got even more distance in that by the debt measurement, 20 feet going to the face of piling. Has it been field confirmed yet? No. Is it intended to by plan intent? Absolutely.
But that wasn't my question. The agreement was 20 feet of clear space between the property line and the outermost portion of any dock or deck or apparatus that you have. Is it 12 plus eight or is it approximately eight? That's what we need to know.
The number on the plan is 20 feet. Then, I can't say anything more than that.
We did, 20 plus eight, which is 20, and then we did another two and a half, so it should be 22 and a half. So, yes.
And does that provide 20 feet of clear space as agreed between the boundary line and the outermost portion of your piling collars?
Correct.
Yes?
22 and a half.
I'm sorry?
Yes, the answer is yes, Chris.
Okay, if the answer's yes, that's fine. You know, we would obviously look for Mr. Halberner's certification of that and on behalf of the Blue Water Marina, we have considered this application at length. After considering the application, after hearing the answers that we were just given and the good of the waterfront, Special District, Blue Water Marina supports the applicant's endeavors.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you to Mr. Calabrese. I think you're going to be great neighbors and it's really nice to see that collaborative effort of the neighbors coming together to really work on a project that's going to benefit everybody and certainly Mr. Calabrese and Mr. Leeds are the ones who are going to see the greatest impact there. So, thank you for working with us and thank you for speaking up on the call and that's it.
Are there any other attorneys that wish to speak?
Yes, Bob Baronowski here from Harbor Vista Limited Homeowners Association, the homeowners across the street on Amherst.
Bob, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, a good evening, everybody. I understand you've got a full house, so I'll make this brief. There may be some other individual owners who are within the association who might wish to make further comments. So, I'd like to just focus my comment on the issue of traffic. We understand it's a permitted use, but there are concerns about traffic and how the patrons will be dropped off and picked up from the aqua park. The staff committee had referenced that a traffic study might be required. I haven't seen a traffic study, traffic impact statement, haven't heard anything about it. The use is going to bring many patrons to the site, even if there's no parking, we submit that the applicant should be required to show there will be safe ingress and egress in and out of the premises and no detrimental impact on safe traffic circulation on Amherst. That's consistent with your ordinances, Section 175, Test 16, requiring an applicant to show there will be no adverse impact on the road network, ingress and egress or circulation. So, we really feel strongly there should be someplace for the patrons to safely exit the vehicles, enter the waterpark from the street and we like to know how that's going to happen. So, we haven't heard anything about that. I understand there's going to be no bathrooms and no parking. Not quite sure how that's going to work and if that's consistent with what DEP was requiring, but someplace really safe needs to be made available for the patrons to get in and out of vehicles that are coming in from the landward side. Understanding, I've heard testimony, the applicant believes there'll be a lot of people coming in from the waterside, but you know, I doubt it'll be 100% of the patrons. And I know there's been a reference also to the prior marina use, which didn't involve dropping off and picking up groups of kids and references to comparisons to a beach drop-off where there are places for public access and places to pull over and park and there are zero places available for that here. So, those are the comments that I have to offer to the board on behalf of the association. As I said, other individual homeowners across the street on Amherst may have different comments. So, I thank the board for considering that specific issue.
Thank you. Is there any other attorneys? Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Chairman, Jeffrey Herskowitz.
Are you an attorney?
I am, sir.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm sole practitioner now. I used to be with Fox in Atlantic City. I dock my boat at Jimmy's Dock, Barbary Toast.
Mr. Herskowitz, are you representing a client or speaking as a resident?
No, I'm speaking on my own behalf.
Okay, just please raise, just state your address and I'll swear you in.
I could be a client, you never know, right? You never know, right?
Go ahead, John, go ahead.
My question, okay, so I face south.
I have to swear you in.
Excuse me? Swear me in, please.
Your address, please.
115 South Osborne, Margate, New Jersey.
Okay, Mr. Herskowitz, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
So again, I am docked midway on Jimmy Leeds Dock on Barbary Coast. I do face south. My vessel is 31 feet. And I think you did a nice job laying out the docking system. As currently stands, I'm able to navigate through that between the two docks. My only concern would be, is there going to be docking allowed along the north side and south side of the dock that was just installed?
On the outer side of the dock. On the lead side, there's water jet skis. So the plan depicts, again, patron jet ski docks. I don't understand the question any more specifically than that.
My question is, if I pull straight, okay, if I pull straight on, I slip. I'm able to navigate the turnout. I would have a problem if there's a jet ski or another vessel parked alongside of that dock. And I think I spoke to the owner this morning. I don't think they're going to do it, I just want to make sure they're not. And I do want to express that I am in favor of the application.
Thank you.
Could you answer a question about the docking, please?
It's on the plans that there is docking of jet skis on that side. Yes, there is docking.
I did not see that plan. Thank you.
Okay.
Sir, the docking of jet skis, if I may respond, is for patrons only. So it's temporary. We're not renting those spaces.
I know, but if you have a patron that comes by the jet ski and if they're parking midway, and I'm going to be selfish on the facing north side, that could cause a safety hazard. But I don't think, I don't think you don't have any cleats down. So I'm hoping you won't have any parking there.
There's no cleats there yet, but there will be. But I'm not sure whether you missed the beginning of the meeting where we described in detail that our employees are going to be docking all of the vessels, whether it be a wave runner or a boat, on the outside first. If, in fact, we do need more docking, temporary docking for customers, that's the only time that we will be pulling wave runners onto the north side and boats onto the south side. So if you're on the lead side, then that would be wave runners on that side if we need it.
Okay. Well, I'm glad to see that you're going to be addressing it, and I am in favor of the application.
We will be policing that.
Thanks, Mr. [inaudible].
All right, next from the public, please. Hello.
I'd like to say...
Name an address. Jim Leeds?
Yeah.
George Kennedy, did I see a George Kennedy?
Yes, you did.
George Kennedy, you're recognized.
George Kennedy, your name and your address, please, for the record?
George Kennedy, 9414 Amherst Avenue, Margate, New Jersey.
And please raise your right hand, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I have a question. You're basing your approvals on the DEP and the Army Corps of Engineers permit, correct?
No, that's incorrect. We're basing them on the current application.
Okay, so why would you even apply to the Army Corps of Engineers for a permit or the DEP? I mean, it refers to, I mean, you needed those approvals to get to this bar. So you stated that you have an Army Corps of Engineers and a DEP permit, correct?
We do have both of them, correct.
Okay. On those permits, it states that if there's significant changes in the plans, it's just to notify the DEP and the Army Corps of Engineers as to what those changes are and approvals prior to you doing, installing the docks. So if you can, Mr. Halber, are you there? Halber?
I'm here. Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Can you pull up drawing GE 101?
That is not, was not introduced as a exhibit, was it?
It's the permit application. It's the approved permits.
I understand what it is, I don't... This is not the proper, if he wants a public comment, that's fine. But I don't think Mr. Kennedy has the ability...
I have a question, and I need a real length of clarification on it.
Completely inappropriate.
Well, ask the question. He doesn't have the exhibit, but ask the question.
On the DEP and the Army Corps of Engineers drawings on, that's 101, it indicates that there would be bathrooms on the land side. And I see on the revised plans on C101, with a revision of June 9th, the bathrooms disappeared and also there was changes to the setback. The indication on note number two on the plans indicate that you're going to be changing the setback on the, let's see, it was on the northeast and the southwest sides. Well, actually, you've changed it on all four sides. And those plans really need to be resubmitted. And also, I did mention that the bathrooms were removed from the plans. Note number nine on that revision of 69 indicates that you can move the water park to any area you want. And you're asking, and that's noted on number nine on the plan. This track is drastically different than the permit drawings. So I think that you should reconsider, if you're heading towards approving this, you should reconsider it until you get DEP approval and Army Corps of Engineers approval.
For the respect of... Yeah, he's incorrect, because I said earlier, one does not walk control of the other. We're here tonight for site plan under the city of Margate's site plan ordinance. So respectfully, I'm going to have to say, we're going to not address that question. And we're going to ask you to continue to consider the application based on the merits, not what Mr. Kennedy, who is not an expert in the field of engineering to the, as far as I know. You're not a maritime engineer, are you, Mr. Kennedy?
No.
Okay. So based upon no testimony against what Mr. Halbruner had said, we're going to ask you to approve it on the merits of this case, not on what he believes should happen here. Clearly, there are a lot of people who don't want this to happen.
The last thing I'm going to say is, I just want to put it in the record that it's deviated from plans, the approved plans. And we'll just leave it at that. It's deviated from the plans.
Thank you.
I don't agree, but we're going to respectfully disagree.
That's okay, Eric, next.
I have a question.
Kathy Hartford.
Yes, hi.
Say your name and address, please, I'm sorry.
My name is Kathy Hartford. I'm at 123 North Brunswick in Margate.
And can you please raise your right hand, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, go ahead.
I have a question about the life jackets. And I think this is the great project, and I have lots of grandkids. But I was also in education where I've dealt with a lot of kids. And I'm wondering, is there a way to sanitize quickly those jackets before they move from one person to the next? So that we're not, I mean, even aside from COVID that we're dealing with right now? But generally, some people have something that we don't want passed along.
Maggie, would you answer that, please?
Of course, yes, there is. We actually dip the life jackets in a bucket of disinfectant before we rehang them.
Right, great, super, I'm glad you thought of that, thank you.
Sure did.
I'd like to say something.
All right, name and address. Was Kathy...
9510 Amherst.
All right, and was the woman Kathy from 123 North Brunswick, were you finished?
Yes, she was done.
Okay, Mr. Barrow, please state, please raise your right hand, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So we're going to take one of the nice wreaths on the bay that has just been refurbished beautifully, that where boats and docks belong, and we're going to put a bunch of screaming kids with colored balloons there. You're going to take one of the nicest views in the country and destroy it. Okay, number two, when people have to go to the bathroom, they don't care whether there's a bathroom. They will jump in the water and go to the bathroom. Number three, trash. You might not sell trash, but people are going to drop it out of their cars and walking back and forth to the thing. No doubt, no question, it happens now without the water park. And then you're going to take a beautiful Sunday morning at 9:00 a.m. with its beautiful, peaceful, quiet there. And then you're going to open up screaming kids, colored balloons, and air blowers. I mean, seriously, seriously, are you really, that's what you're thinking?
Yes, I think it is.
I appreciate that, I know the professionalism, but this is really something that should be just allowed. Thank you.
I don't think that we have the need to address that. It's just symptomatic of the...
Who wants to add? Who's next from the public?
Jim Lee? Jim Lee?
Jim Leeds, did I hear?
Yes.
Mr.?
All right.
You're a typical attorney.
I'll take that as a compliment, sir. Thank you. I don't know what you do, but I hope you're more than just typical. I'll be just a typical...
Eric. Jim Leeds is recognized.
Mr. Leeds, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Jim Leeds, 9401 Amherst Avenue, Barbary Coast Marina.
And Mr. Leeds, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I met with, thank you, board and Mr. Goldstein. I met with Mrs. Day and Mr. Goldstein a few times over the winter. And I had some, I had some concerns with the designs for the water park and with regards to my Marina. And I have also read Mr. McLaren's report, which basically addressed all of the, all of our issues and concerns. And it seems like all of these conditions and my concerns have been addressed. I fully support this application and I wish you the best of luck.
Thanks, Jim. And I just want to say for the record as well, Mr. Leeds has really been a great corporate neighbor, next door to Maggie. He's a man of his word and has really, again, worked collaboratively along with Mr. Calabrese over at Blue Water to try to make this area as nice as possible. And Maggie obviously recognizes the investment that the Marinas have in making the Amherst Avenue corridor as great as possible. So Jim, just all the best to you and hopefully you have a great summer out there.
Thank you, perfect.
Next from the audience, please.
I have a question, Ray Romino.
Ray?
Okay, Mr. Romino, your address, please?
Yes, my address is 9408 Amherst Avenue.
And please raise your right hand, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone that's on this call. Again, as a neighbor over here at Amherst Avenue, I know that we're trying to beautify and increase the statue of the area. Again, my question will always be with regards to the traffic and traffic pattern. I have plenty of parking, thank you very much. I have a garage and everything. But my big concern is, and I'm sure you've been up and down the street during the summer months, but the question is, when parents drop off kids, and you know this as well as I do, when kids are going to a water park or the beach, they get very, very excited. And my concern is, when someone opens the door and mom and dad just can't beat the kids out, that they run in front of a car and something's going to happen. So I would hope, I would hope that a traffic study is done so that we can address this problem. Because the worst thing that can happen, you know this as a parent, and I know this as a parent, if someone gets hurt. And number two, if some, my question, I guess this is the owner, if there would be an issue with one of the water park folks, how are your lifeguards going to be able to address any issues that they may have?
Okay, so first, I'm going to back up and let you know I'm a mother of three, 10, 7, and 5, so I completely agree with you. And there's nothing more important than the safety of my children and everyone else's as a business owner. So we did conduct a traffic study. It should be part of the application. I'm not sure if it is or not. That's a question for my attorney. But we did pay for a traffic study and conduct a traffic study. And we are wholeheartedly in agreement to cooperate with anything that the city feels that we should do in order to protect the children at drop-off. So that's first and foremost. And I'm not quite sure I understand the second part of your question.
If a child or an adult in the water park is having some type of health issues, maybe, I mean, God forbid someone drowning, how will you be able to address that in a timely manner?
Okay, so first of all, no one can drown. They are all wearing life jackets. They cannot drown. That cannot happen. We've been operating an aquapark for 30 years and we have never, ever once let anyone go on without a life jacket. And we've never once had a drowning, ever. So that, well, that is a non-issue. No one's going to drown. If someone is having a health issue or a health concern, 911 will be called immediately. So that is how I would respond to that, and that has happened. I own a retail store as well. I've called 911 from my retail store. That can happen anywhere.
I have one final question, and this is to the city of Margate. When the water park opens up, will there be some type of police presence to take a look at the traffic and make sure people are driving at a proper rate of speed? Because you know as well as I do, there are times coming up and down Amherst Avenue, sometimes they are exceeding the speed limit by quite a bit. So during the time that the water park is operational, I'm just concerned that people need to be more careful. I'm hoping we get some increased police traffic to make sure that something bad doesn't happen.
That would be something you would have to address with the police. We have no control over that.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman? Anyone else from the audience?
Elizabeth Little. I have a question.
Elizabeth, you're recognized.
9412 Amherst Avenue. You've answered many of my questions.
You have to be sworn in first, Elizabeth, hang on.
Okay.
Sorry, Ms. Little, if you can please just raise your right hand, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, go ahead.
Okay, I live directly across the street from the park. And my concern is, well, I know you've addressed they don't need bathrooms, but if they decide they need them and Margaret Day doesn't own the fleet, will they be on her dock, the porta-potties, or on our street? It's a question for Margaret. And the fact is that if you have 16 employees, even if they're only there four hours a day, at some point, they're going to have to relieve themselves. How does that happen?
Well, we understand that. As Mrs. Day said earlier, ma'am, we are working on a solution. We have a few items that we certainly believe can work, but at this point, we don't have a definitive answer for you.
That's too bad. Okay, so, and also, the pump noise, what do you, how noisy is a pump? Is it like a lawnmower? Is it like a gen freeze? What is the, what is the noise level of the pumps that will go on at 8:30 in the morning?
Again, I'd say it's less than a lawnmower. I'm not sure how to compare it to another piece of machinery, per se, I'm sorry. But I will reiterate that we do pump up next to a boutique hotel every morning. Not every morning. When we do pump up next to a boutique hotel. And we do not have complaints from the people that are in those rooms right next to our operation.
Okay.
And also, we can answer the question quickly. Your Marina is flanked on both sides by boat marinas. You're an aquapark Marina. Boats have engines that start up that make a little bit of noise as well, correct? And would it be fair to say that the pumps are fast noise?
They're not out there all day. They get their boats together and they leave. Whereas the pumps for this aquapark are going to be running all day.
No, they're not.
No, they will not.
No, they're not, man.
No, that's not true. I just want to correct that.
These are not pumps like a... Maggie? Maggie?
Yes.
Are these going to be pumps like Christmas decorations where the pump's running all day to keep the inflated? They're pumped up once and then it's...
Correct.
Okay, they won't be running if it's low on air, they're pumping up in the morning, that is it. That is it?
No. Yes, correct. Just once in the morning.
Okay. And then also, when they try to get the groups of people together, are they going to use a bullhorn?
No, they are not.
Oh, everybody line up. We're ready to go on now.
We need to buy...
I have a question. I have a question. Too many people...
Elizabeth, are you done?
I asked a question. When they're getting the groups together, how will they notify them it's time for them to go on? Will they, like, shoot a horn off?
They'll be standing right next to them, ma'am. They'll be standing right next to them. They're going to escort them down onto the dock. So, there will be no need to yell.
Okay, so it'll be in their own voice. Okay. That's my question.
Okay. Next. From the public, I know there was someone else.
I would speak...
Beth?
Yes. Do I have to be on camera?
Well...
No, you don't have to. Just talk.
Just state your name and address, and I'll swear you in. Beth?
Okay. Beverly Levin. I live at 2 South Benson Avenue.
Okay, Beverly, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm curious. What is the age span that the water park is generally aimed at for children?
Well, there's no one age. It's children of all ages, ma'am. It's not like there's a smaller group or a bigger group of any specific age. So, that's a difficult question to address.
Okay, what I meant was, is it... I know there's life jackets. Is it safe for, let's say, a three-year-old, a four-year-old? I'm just curious.
It's a difficult question to answer because children develop differently, of course. Some three-year-olds swim like a fish at three, and some seven-year-olds don't. So, that's a difficult question for me to answer. That would be up to the parents to determine whether their child is up to the task of going out.
Of course, of course. I totally agree with you. The thing I'm envisioning is that you keep talking about... Everyone's talking about the parking, and you're saying that parents are going to drop off their kids just like at the beach. But who drops off kids at the beach? The family stays with them. That's what I don't understand.
Typically, I did not say that. Other people are saying that. And I would agree with you, ma'am. Typically, one parent does get out of the car if it is a drop-off situation. If they haven't either walked or ridden their bikes or parked somewhere and walked their children to the aqua park. It depends on the age of the child as well. But any child that is not supposed to be unsupervised certainly always has a parent with them.
Right. That's what I didn't understand when you said there's 17 parking spaces, and that's adequate. It just doesn't sit right with me. You have 16 employees who might be using, let's say, half of those spaces. And you're going to be...
Beth, they have no spaces. Zero.
They have no spaces. Oh, they have... Interesting. Okay. So, you have 17 spaces for people, and how many...
They have no spaces, Beth. Zero.
Okay. So, you have 17 for patrons, right? You have 17 then left for patrons.
No, there are no parking... You can tune into that. There's a link.
It's like a Zoom.
What?
I thought you said there's the same amount there was before. Didn't someone mention that?
There was zero before, and there's zero now.
Okay. So, then where do people that are bringing their kids park if they have to, if they can't walk? A good amount, I'm thinking, will walk over. But if they can't walk...
Beth, there's no parking requirements before this board, so that's not... We need to move on. Parking is not an issue here that the board has any control over.
Okay, so you're just not dealing with... Okay, I get it. All right, well, thank you for answering.
You're welcome. Next.
Yep.
Next. Anyone else from the audience?
Yeah, Fred Torsi.
Brad, you're recognized.
Mr. Torsi, how do you spell it? T-O?
T-U-R-S-I.
And your address, please?
9400 Amherst.
And can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm kind of listening to this. And we know on the water side, that's a whole different issue. That's DEP. But regarding the planning board and the things you can control, what we'd like to see, and we're talking about the safety of the kids. That's what we really worry about down here. So, we'd like to see crosswalks going from our side of Amherst Avenue, which would be, I guess, the east side, going across to the west side so that kids can walk safely across the street in a crosswalk, rather than being dropped off in the middle of the blocks and dealing with traffic issues that way.
Mr. Torsi, I think the plans for the promenade, I've seen the plans for that. It's been a while, but I think that included crosswalks when they put the promenade in.
Mr. Chairman, it's Roger. I can address that.
And possibly, and this is something else that goes along with that, possibly having a stop sign somewhere there so when they're dropping the kids off, you know, the other cars are kind of stopped.
Again, this is something you would need to bring up with the City Commission. That's not something the planning board does. I'm not trying to blow you off. That's not something we can determine. But I agree with you wholly.
Yeah, now, the other item, and this is something with the safety, and we talked about, they don't have a drop-off area. What I really would like to see would be for 8:30 to 5:30, certain number of parking spaces designated as no parking so that people can safely drop off their kids. And once again, I don't know if you control that or if that's the commissioners. If that's commissioners, then...
That's the commissioners. All right, thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Yes.
Wait, I have one more thing that I want to add on that issue.
One minute. You next.
With the bathroom. On the DEP permit side, they had a bathroom on the land side. And we don't want a bathroom. And Mr. Goldstein is correct. We don't want to see it. We don't want to see it by the promenade. We don't want parents wheeling their kids and have to deal with a bathroom and the mess that that would create. So, if there is a bathroom, we want it on the water side, whatever it is, as the other water park.
Right. All right, next, ma'am. Next.
Can anyone hear me? It's Jody Singer.
Jody Singer, you're recognized.
Okay, 9550 Amherst Avenue.
Okay, just please raise your right hand.
I have a question to...
Ma'am.
You have to be sworn in, Jody.
Jody.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Can I ask you a question now?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to be clear. Did you say there was a traffic study or is going to be a traffic study?
Maggie?
There is a traffic study conducted.
Was, and it's been done. When was that study done? During what months?
It was completed last summer.
So, it was during the summer, during the heavy traffic time?
Correct.
That study was done?
Correct.
She said yes.
Okay. So, the problem is, is during that time, the cars, and they do speed, if people are dropping off, cars that are behind them are going to pass around them. They do that on an average day. And it's not just about the vehicles. There's a lot of pedestrians on bikes, a lot of people walking. And with people will get impatient as kids are being unloaded if there wasn't designated spots. People are going to pass. And it's not that wide a street. I don't understand. It's already dangerous.
We have no response to that.
How is that being addressed?
The city is addressing it. The city is addressing it.
One of the most dangerous parts of this. The water park is under your control. Out of, on the street, I feel like no one's in control. Like, everyone keeps passing that off.
They're not required to have parking.
I understand they're not required to have parking, but what about the pedestrian safety of people getting out of cars?
Well, you're not allowed to stop in the middle of the street and drop people off. The people are required to find a place to park. Whether they break the law is not our concern.
Right. Okay. So, in other words, Ms. Day takes no responsibility for that. So, basically, it'll be after the bathroom people...
You take responsibility for that?
Right. Okay. Want to be clear that that's not being taken into consideration by Ms. Day.
Thank you.
I say that it was taken into consideration. I have three young children. I know you've been here.
But I have... All I keep hearing is you're only responsible for the water park, not for what happens.
Actually, I never said that.
Respectfully, we have no control over the land. We couldn't do anything with the land if we wanted to. We only own water rights. Whether the city chooses to do something, that's up to the commissioners and the police. We're only dealing today with what Mrs. Day has in the legal...
Jody, I just want you to know that I agree with you. I do agree with you. And I think that the safety of anyone being dropped off in the street should be taken into account. I can't take responsibility for that, however. But I do agree with you. And I 100% think that if anything were ever to come up with the city coming to me and saying, "This is what we would like to do to address this problem," I would support it.
So, we have your word. As we move into the summer, if we see that pedestrians, bicyclists, children, adults are in danger, you will be accountable for that, and you will...
No, she's not. She's not accountable for anything on the land side. There's nothing we can do about the land side.
They're children off, ma'am. I can't be accountable.
All right, okay. We'll see how this idea works.
Next, please. Anyone from the public?
Elizabeth Little.
Elizabeth, you're recognized.
Right.
Jody, your mic being...
I've been sworn in already. Okay, so if you can't drop off in front of the park, will the city enforce that? So that, and who do we...
Elizabeth, that is something you would need to address to the commissioners or the police department. You have only a hundred and forty. Next. Pat Craser. Pat Craser.
We're all listening to this because we're breathing out.
Microphone? Hey, you're going down.
Rich, hang on. Rich, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay. I'm speaking to the public now. This only works if you go one at a time. And when you're done, please turn your microphone off so the next person can talk. Again, I need to stress, we're not blowing you off, but we have no control over what is the City Commission's responsibility and what the police department's responsibility is. I wish we did. I don't wish we did, but I wish we could answer your questions. But we are only here tonight to see if they meet the requirements for the site plan approval. They need no variances, and they just have to prove that they meet the requirements. We are obligated to vote for this. So, any comments are welcome, but please keep that in mind. So, if anyone is from the public that hasn't spoken before, please let me know, and I'll recognize you. Roger, would you have something to say?
I do, Mr. Commissioner. Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I just want to report that the city, as part of the promenade project, is incorporating traffic striping, which will delineate the lanes, the center lane and the shoulders, as well as having very visible keyboard-type traffic crossing markings crossing Amherst Avenue at several locations.
It's very hard to hear you.
Oh, thank you. The city is undertaking, as part of the Promenade Project, they are incorporating safety measures that include striping along Amherst Avenue to delineate the shoulders, traffic striping down the middle to delineate the lanes, as well as crosswalks, painted crosswalks that will stand out. They're known as piano keys, highly visible, that'll help with the pedestrian traffic. The city's doing that as part of the master plan of the whole Amherst Avenue project. In addition to that, the city just commissioned a traffic study on Amherst Avenue between Washington Avenue and Coolidge Avenue to look at the possibility of traffic safety upgrades, including possibly making it one-way. There might, you can't install a stop signs to slow down traffic. That's illegal according to DOT. However, we are looking at all options as part of the city's master plan of Amherst Avenue. It's not fair to this one applicant to address all of Amherst Avenue. And I believe that their traffic study indicates that there is no impact on the project. As a licensed engineer, I would concur with that. So, Mr. Chairman, the city is looking at traffic safety upgrades along Amherst Avenue as part of the whole project. This is just a small function of that study.
Thank you, Mr. McLaren. Anyone else from the public? All right, public portion is closed. Is there any other comments from the board, any questions of the applicant? If not, Leo, would you move us on to the next step?
Clem, I have one more question. What is, for the owner, what are going to be the ticket costs for the one-hour and two-hour programs?
Clem, you could, go ahead, Maggie.
For you, sir.
No, not for me. I sink.
Why, I have to answer that before the voter or after? Our prices will be published when we open.
Okay.
Clem, I think you get a discount.
Leo?
Sure. And Eric, the two reports, Roger's report, you agree with everything in that, and then the city engineer's report?
That's correct, Mr. Manos.
Okay, and then as far as the engineer's report, in Section 1A and B, there's, I guess, some submission requirements. This might be better a question for Mr. Halbrunner. Are you requesting checklist waivers for those items, or are you going to supply those items? There's submission requirements.
Yeah, with the exception of the traffic engineer study that we have and will submit, I would request that the balance of the checklist items be granted a waiver from. I believe that the issues that they would otherwise raise have otherwise been addressed, and the entirety of the application before the board is intact without providing those initial items.
Mr. Chairman, as the, this is Roger. I would concur with that request. I said some of these items are not applicable to this application.
Okay.
All right, so if everyone's ready, this is an application for preliminary and final major site plan approval. There are no variances. There are certain checklist waivers that I just noted as set forth in the city engineer's report dated June 12, 2020, and that's Section 1A and Section 1B. They did say that they will submit the traffic impact statement, so someone does need to make a motion for preliminary and final major site plan approval. Those waivers I just noted, the conditions will be, any conditions set forth in Mr. McLaren's report dated June 25, 2020, I'll make specific reference to, it's all the conditions, but I'll make specific reference to pages six and seven of his report pertaining to the marinas on each side. I will also spell those out if this is approved in the memorializing resolution, and any other conditions in the city engineer's report dated June 12, and the applicant will comply with any representations it made during the course of the hearing. So, that's the motion. We need a motion and a second, and nine members need to vote.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Tom Collins?
Being that this is a by right, basically a by right subdivision, we're not asking for any variances. With what we've already accomplished on the waterfront, with what Mr. Leeds and Mr. Gormley have done, and how we're improving our waterfrontage in our district there, we're getting dredging, we're getting a promenade, we're improving tremendously Amherst Avenue and the bayfront, I see no reason, there's no detriment to the city on this. All the logistics will be worked out by police, fire, building department, things that aren't under our control. So, I vote in favor.
Clem Wazleski?
It's really a very interesting project for Margate, and unusual and additional to our available recreation facilities, certainly an enhancement to a resort-type community. I think, along with the miniature golf course, is going to put a tremendous strain on kids' allowances in town, but so be it. I was surprised at various people being concerned about the noise, because we're losing boat slips, and I don't think there's anything more disturbing than some 32-footer riding up at 5:00 in the morning to go to the canyon. This is going to be quiet as can be compared to that. I think there's going to be parking problems. I think there are going to be bathroom problems. I think there are going to be drop-off problems. But hopefully commissioners and the police will be able to work those things out. I think solutions are available. So, I vote in favor of the project.
Richard Patterson?
First, I'd like to apologize to the public. My wife says I speak too stern, but it's hard talking into my little phone, looking at a little picture, so I don't mean to be stern. What we're voting on here, by by right means they have the right to do this. If they meet the requirements for this site plan, which they do, so if we vote no, they sue us and they get it anyway. This is not whether we support or don't support the project, but this is, they need to.
Your church serves too.
I can't get this off. Mine are from California.
Keep going, Rich. Go ahead, Rich.
Am I back on?
Yeah, you're good.
So, they meet all the requirements, they need no variances, they need no parking. I vote yes.
Michael Cristaldi?
Yeah, this is odd, but I agree with Mr. Collins with his opinion of this, and I like that Mr. Leeds and Mr. Calabrese came to an agreement with them, and everything worked out nicely. I think this is just great for the city and for everybody involved in it. I vote yes.
Jim Gallantino?
I don't have any problem with it. I think they voiced their concern, the taxpayers on the street. I think Jim Lee stepped up and said that they did a great job, and he's a neighbor, and I don't see any detriment. I see it's going to be a positive. I think it's something for the kids to do. This town's really changing for the kids, and that's the most important part. And let the building department and the zoning department handle all the problems that come up after we approve it, and we'll take care of it. I approve this application.
Margaret Gubernalti?
Hi. Thank you all, and, Mr. Chairman, I think you did a really good job handling the people in the audience. Again, this, I agree, this is a variance-free application. There are no requirements for parking or bathrooms. It's approved by government agencies as well, and it satisfies our city ordinance. You know, Ms. Day is investing in Margate. She runs successful parks in Avalon and maybe elsewhere. And I know she's carefully studied our area. Safety, of course, is important for all of our kids, but I believe this application fits into our waterfront special district and our upcoming promenade. I think it's a great addition, and I vote in favor of the application.
Craig Palmisano?
Who? You.
You.
Craig.
Yes. It's for kids. It's a wonderful thing. It's healthy, it's fun, it's the only place kids can enter our bay waters. There is nowhere for kids to swim in the bay, have fun in the bay. It's removing an old dilapidated dock that was there, and I was on that dock for 20 years. And that dock was pretty loud in the afternoons. Early mornings, it was loud. This is just so much better than a marina with guys throwing up their boats with gasoline. It's clean, it's healthy. I approve this project. I'm looking forward to it.
Joseph D. Girallamo?
Yes, this is a by right subdivision, and listening to the other members of the board, we really don't have any control what happens out in the drop-off area. Hopefully, the city and the police department will handle those issues. And as the chairman stated, and I think Roger stated, in the plans for the promenade, there's walkways and things that are coming up that are in those plans. So, I agree with the other board members, and I'm going to approve this.
And Michael Richmond?
Yeah, I agree with Craig. I think it's a very passive use. I think it's a more environmentally friendlier use than having a marina with boats and gas and whatever else comes with that. So, I think it's a great project for the city, and I approve it.
The application passes with nine votes in favor and zero opposed.
Okay, next case.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you all. Next case is Stephen Mooney, 8 South Quincy Avenue, Block 118, Lot 13, located in the S-60 district, seeking sea variance, relief from rite-side yard setback, building coverage, roof pitch, and possibly others in order to renovate the existing single-family home. Taxes and water payments are current, and proof of advertising and notifying has been satisfied. Mr. McLaren?
Thank you, Board Chairman, Board members. My report is dated June 18, 2020, in regard to the application of Stephen Mooney, 8 South Quincy Avenue, Block 118, Lot 13, within the S-40 zoning district. It's in FEMA Zone elevation 9, so they require first floor, the bottom is elevation 12.
Can't hear you.
Chris, could you mute your microphone, please, Chris?
Done.
Ready?
Mute your microphone, please. Thank you.
It's in FEMA Zone A, elevation 9, which requires the bottom of the first floor to be at elevation 12 as a minimum. Zoning height reference is 9 plus 4 over elevation 13. They're allowed 30 feet above elevation 13. This is a sea variance for planning and zoning report. This is a substantial benefit variance, not a hardship variance. The background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the city of Margate to elevate an existing structure with existing non-conforming setbacks. Some additions are being proposed which increase the non-conforming issues and require variances. The site is located within the S-40 zoning district. Variances required are listed below. The garage is counted as building coverage as it is connected to the principal structure as defined by ordinance. The structure is also below the base flood elevation plus freeboard requirements and is subject to the 50% improvement requirements, therefore that.
Really can't hear him.
Can the board members hear me?
Are you?
Keep going.
The house lift is required due to the 50% rule, plus the applicant wishes to elevate the structure. Page two is the zoning schedule. As you can see, there are six variances, two are related. Page three, the documents reviewed, as you can see, they're pretty extensive as to the number of plans. Section three, on the bottom of page three, are the variances required, and I will go through those. The side yard setback for the building on the right side, whereas eight feet is a required minimum side yard setback, three feet exists and three feet is proposed. This is an expansion of a non-conforming setback. Side yard setback, porch on the right-hand side, whereas eight feet is a required minimum side yard setback, 12 feet exists and three feet is proposed. This is due to the expansion proposed for the porch. Combined side yard setback for the building, whereas 18.5 feet is a required minimum combined side yard setback, 33 feet exists and 13.15 feet is proposed. Again, this is due to the expansion. Combined side yard setback to the porch, whereas 18.5 feet is a required minimum combined side yard setback, 13.15 feet exists and 13.15 feet is proposed. That's an expansion of a non-conforming setback. Rear yard setback for the building, whereas 16 feet is a required minimum rear yard setback, 3.3 feet exists and 3.3 feet is proposed. That's due to the vertical lift of the garage and converting it from a accessory use to a principal use. Item number six, building coverage, whereas 35% or 1,400 square feet is the permitted maximum building coverage, 44.1% exists and 44.6% is proposed. This is an expansion of a non-conforming building coverage by 384 square feet. Again, the building coverage is likely over because the garage is included. Front yard landscape area, whereas 60% is a required minimum front yard landscape area, 55% exists and 54% is proposed. It's an expansion of a non-conforming landscape coverage for the front. Minimum roof pitch for the dormer, whereas five-on-12 is a required minimum roof pitch and 1.5-on-12 is proposed. Minimum roof pitch, the last variance being salt, is the minimum roof pitch portion of the second floor, whereas five-on-12 is required as a minimum roof pitch. A flat roof exists today, and two-on-12 is proposed. So, it is an improvement. No waivers have been requested. I'll go through some of my comments, not all the comments. The side yard setback variance is created by adding living space inside of the attached garage and raising the walls to it and adding living space at a non-conforming setback on the second floor. The side yard setback on the right side of the porch also requires a variance. Combined side yard setback for the principal building and the porch both require variances. The rigorous setback is required as 16 feet or 20% of the lot depth. The existing setback to the attached garage is 3.3 feet, and the garage is being elevated and converted to living space, therefore requiring a variance, as previously stated. The building coverage is already 364 square feet over what the maximum is permitted. Again, the garage is included and likely throws that over. And an additional 20 square feet is proposed to be added, requiring a variance. I think the 20 feet, 20 square feet is basically they're squaring off a chamfered corner. The front yard landscaping is being reduced, even though it is already non-compliant, and the reduction requires a variance, even though it is so slight. Your overall landscaping is non-compliant, but is being enhanced slightly by adding a grass strip within the driveway. The tire strip driveway shall comply with the design standard of 2.5 feet tire strips separated by 36 inches of grass as per ordinance. Landscape needs to be clarified during, including the correct number of shrubs for each front yard and the total number of shrubs. That can be a condition of approval. The limit of public improvements need to be clearly shown with the required specifications and tolerances. If any damages incurred by the house lift or construction, the owner must replace it at the owner's expense. Item number 12, the street trees shall be placed in the governor's strip, which in turn shall be grass. I believe that is the case now. I don't, not sure if there's trees, I forget. The existing outside shower appears to have not, does not comply. The enclosure, if possible, should be moved three feet from the property line to minimize impact on the neighbor. Skip number 14 and 15, I already discussed. The recommendations are standard. I'll leave that up to the applicant to say whether they agree to it or not, but it's standard issue. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Ballinson?
What's that, Mr. Patterson?
Yes, Chris, you're done.
What's that?
I'm done.
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinson.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Chris Ballinson for Stephen Mooney. With respect to the, I'd say renovation, but it's really a preservation of a classic centerhole colonial brick parkway home on Quincy Avenue, really classic traditional parkway home in the heart of the parkway. What Mr. Mooney proposes on the property, which is 8 South Quincy, Lot 13, Block 118, is to preserve and restore the home that exists there now. Rather than tear the house down and deliver, you know, five-bedroom, three-and-a-half-bath, cookie cutter, two-and-a-half-story home. The application looks like it's a lot of variances. It is a lot of variances. Whatever, Roger came up with eight or nine, and I don't contest any of them, any of them. But they're all relatively insignificant or negligible, because as, with respect to the setbacks, no setback encroachments are greater than they are now. And we're not encroaching any setback greater than the current existing encroachment, which has been there since the 1930s. The house was built in the 30s. There are a couple of fill-ins which modify the coverage. The fill-ins are really for aesthetics, for safety, for security, nothing more than that. The front porch is being expanded across the front of the house, as it should, as it should have been with the original design. It just provides additional outdoor living space, enhances the neighborhood, enhances interaction between the neighbors. I'd like to touch upon the variances, as Roger did, and explain to you essentially what you're going to hear and what we can justify. The rear yard setback variance, we're not adding anything in the rear yard. The garage space, which I think is pretty much been converted to habitable space a long time ago, is just going to be legitimized on the city's record, so to speak, as habitable space. We're not changing it at all. It's the garage space as you see it now, just going to be elevated with the rest of the house as it's attached, and it will be noted as being habitable. The combined side yard setbacks, three feet on the right side, we can't do anything about that. The right side setback is a fill-in at the corner, at the back of the house, and the front porch, which is extended across the front of the house to the sides of the house, but not beyond. The trade-off for the extension lengthwise of the front porch, is it being reduced in depth by two feet? I think it's eight feet now, being reduced to six feet in depth, which is the trade-off for the extension at the ends. I didn't even think they should do that, but the applicant insisted on it, and we will leave that alone. A building coverage increase comes about by the additional front porch area and a couple little bumpouts being filled in, which we'll touch upon later, but it's only about 1%. Landscape area, again, is kicked up, is decreased by about a half percent as a result of the front porch extension. I don't know, Roger, if we calculated the addition back of the driveway strips, we might not have, and that might make the landscaping a wash or bring it to where it was.
I agree.
The only new variances, so to speak, not as a result of existing conditions, are the roof pitch variances. One is a roof pitch replacing a flat roof, which I think can be justified for that reason alone. The other is the office space that you'll see on the second floor being extended with a standing seam metal roof of a pitch that doesn't meet the ordinance requirements, but which is working within an existing roofline and keeps the building well within overall height. What you get, the trade-off for those variances, is you get to see that house there. The neighborhood characteristic is preserved, the continuity with the neighborhood is preserved, the house is being elevated to comply with flood, and I think we'd like to see more applications like this, not more tear downs. With that, let me introduce Steve Mooney, who is a born and raised in Margate, now buying this house and spending more money on it than he probably would like to. But let, introduce Steve Mooney and Jack Smith, project architect, who's done a real nice job in modifying this house. nice job in modifying this house, close, as close to the ordinance as you get, and they'll need to be sworn in.
Sure. Mr. Mooney and Mr. Smith, if you can each state your name and address or business address for the record, I'll swear in together.
I'll start, Stephen Mooney, 16 South Clinton Avenue, Margate.
Good evening, Jack Smith, Bishop and Smith Architects, 1344 Chues Landing Road, Laurel Springs, New Jersey, 08021.
If you could each please raise your right hand, do you, each swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Steve, I want to start with you briefly. We talked earlier, without me asking you a million questions, give the board the benefit of your history in Margate, family's history in the area, what would drew you to this house and why you're doing what you're doing at a cost that may be cost prohibitive, but, but desirable nonetheless.
Thanks, Chris. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. I have a whole new appreciation now for you guys after listening to the last stuff in the flower, your, your meeting. It's my, my first one I've ever attended. My family's been on the island for about a little over 100 years. My, my parents moved to Margate back in, I think it was 1950, 52. So we've been in the city for a long time. We were born and raised in Delavan Avenue in Margate, 401 North. As growing up, you know, as you're in Margate, you realize one of the places you always wanted to live is the Parkway District, except for the beautiful area of the city. I had the opportunity a couple of years ago, back in June of 2018, to come across the property 8 South Quincy Avenue and immediately fell in love. Beautiful street, as you guys know, the house itself, if you've ever driven by, it's a, it's a beautiful old colonial home, needs some work. It's a lot of it's in its original format. And I got into it, I, to Chris's point, didn't realize probably what I was in taking. Didn't realize all the requirements I was going to have to hit from the flood levels as well as the 50% level I was hitting. Have to redo all the electrical, doing, doing all the plumbing, redoing roofing, trying to get the house into total code. But I think it's worth it. You know, one of the things I've seen, I mean, I love some of these houses in Margate, I think need to come down, they need to be rebuilt, they're not in great shape. This house is a, is a classic beauty colonial that I think should not be taken down. I think it should be preserved and saved, and I think it keeps in the character of the street to actually keep it that way, and that's what I'm trying to do. But not only doing its current format, but actually beautified even more. And I think of the plan you saw, I think the architects did a phenomenal job of taking this house, which already had some great bones, and made it even a more beautiful home that I think is going to really complement the street that it's on, and it's going to complement the city. I think you're going to hear today, we're not asking, I think, for anything that's really dramatic, it's really just making more the symmetry of the house, which is keeping with the classic colonial, and I'm making it look more from the street side, much more of a presence than it has today. So anyway, I appreciate your taking all these into consideration, and I thank you for your time tonight.
Thanks, Stephen. Jack Smith, please.
And Chris, just make, just make sure the board knows, knows his credentials.
I will do that.
Thanks.
Good evening, this is Jack Smith from Bishop and Smith Architects. I am the project architect for this project. It's been a great project to work on, so many of our clients.
Jack, can I interrupt you? Jack, you're not swearing in, you are swearing. Give the board the benefit of your, your credentials as an architect and other, other professional credentials you may have.
Yes, I've been in front of this board and many other boards along the coast, as well as inland. I've been an architect since 1996, Drexel graduate. I'm the owner of the firm of Bishop and Smith. You know, we're actually have a couple of other locations in Stone Harbor and also in Ocean City. Again, I've been in front of many, many boards over the years.
Jack, if, if you would, and using Mr. McLaren's report, we understand the property is in the, in Parkway, obviously, the S40 zoning district and the elevation nine flood hazard district. Understanding those items, you've, you've designed a renovation and a restoration of this house that necessitates several variances. In terms of the variances that we're requesting, would you kind of touch upon what your goal was in minimizing the relief being requested and why that is?
Well, if, if, if your question relates to the height, one of the issues that we ran into, obviously, is we have to meet the FEMA requirements, federal requirements of flood and also the addition of the freeboard requirements of the city of Margate. And in doing so, it caused us to have to raise the house pretty significantly. In addition to that, we had some issues with some of the existing, you know, given the fact that this is a very old structure, limited ability to, to make adjustments to some of the mechanicals in there, so there's some ductwork and things that are below the floor line, which was part of the reason why we had to increase it just a slight bit more, I think it's 1.3 feet, just to allow for us to get the ductwork underneath. The old floor system's not really going to allow us to, to manipulate that, that new plenum or the adjusted plenum and ductwork through that. So in order to meet the building codes, that was something that we were forced to do.
Let's talk about that for a second. The, the, the house is in the flood zone, elevation nine, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
And Margate's baseline elevation requirement is, is the baseline elevation, which is nine plus three feet of freeboard and then one additional floor above that for your, for your floor system, is that right?
I end up losing, I don't know, like, six hours.
Hey, Fred?
I got him. And Rich, while, while we had that break, you accept Mr. Smith's, Mr. Smith's credentials?
Yeah, I accept his qualifications. Let me ask a question while we're doing this. How much are you raising?
I was just going to go right through that, Rich.
What's the height of the raising?
One second here. We are raising the house up approximately, what's that number? I'm sorry, I'm calculating the number there to the height.
Looks like five feet.
Five foot seven and a half inches.
Thank you.
Yeah. Sorry for that delay.
Jack, we're coming up to elevation nine from where?
We're coming up to elevation nine from elevation, the existing elevation is 9.63.
Okay, so we got it, we got to get the three feet of freeboard and then one foot of floor system above that, and that's required, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, now, the, the areas where you hang your duct, you have an existing floor system you're working with, which is a 1930s floor system. Unlike new construction, it's, do you see an opportunity to get your ductwork within that existing floor system? And if not, what have you done to accommodate that?
No, it's, it's, it's a solid sawn lumber system that's in the floor there. We don't have the, the luxury of some of the new innovative systems that are out there like open web trusses and some of even the I-joists, which will allow for ductwork to pass through them. So we're limited to that structure that's there and also trying to maintain the existing integrity of this home as a historic home. We don't want to remove any of that and create, you know, or take away from what's already there is the quaintness of the home.
So in order, in order to get your ductwork in there and have that ductwork out of the flood area, so to speak, and, and there where it's permitted, you had to go up with the first floor an additional one foot three inches, is that right?
Yeah, it's approximately 1.3 or one foot four inches, and that will allow us to get at least a 12-inch duct and the mechanicals or the, you know, the flanges and things around them. So that's why we took it to that level. But, you know, as our plan indicates though, we still have not, our, our maximum height is still below the allowable height for the city ordinance.
So to extend, anybody's curious as to why the house is going up 1.3 feet higher than it's, it needs to, the reason is to actually comply with the requirement to keep your ductwork out of flood, flood area.
Yeah, and that's, that's, that's. That, yeah, Mr. Mooney has made several comments in that he would prefer to keep it as low as possible, and, you know, if there were a way to keep it down lower and, you know, and not have to be concerned about the ductwork, that would be his, his wish. But we've confirmed through, you know, the city officials that that's not going to be allowed. That's something that's going to be required, and we really don't have a choice with that if he's going to want to continue to condition the home.
Unfortunately, you were able to do that but stay within the height parameters, and our height is still taking, taken from nine plus four, or is it still taken from elevation 13?
It's still taken from the, the ordinance requirements.
All right, then let's touch, let's go through the chart, Mr. McLaren's prepared for us with respect to the variances. And the first one is the minimum side yard setback on the right and the left side. The right side is three feet.
Yes.
And we are, we are bringing more building to that three feet. One area is the front porch is being brought over, and I believe there's a little fill-in toward the back of the house that is being brought to the three feet, is that correct?
That is correct. The front porch, though, we thought we would try to give a little bit back. The existing depth of the front porch is 10 feet, and we took it back to eight. The idea of expanding that porch was for several reasons. One is it fits into the, the style of that home, which is a, you know, classic colonial, and the cleanliness and simplistic look of it. So, you know, again, in order to give something back, we, you know, did get a little bit. So essentially, we gave back 40 square feet in, in the reduction of the depth of the porch and only adding 44 back, so a difference of four square feet just in the porch. That, that's, that's as much as that was. In the back of the house, so we had, you know, several design concerns in that, and primarily that, that area that we're discussing is on the second floor, right rear corner, and that area is an existing bedroom that we were trying to renovate. But what happened was, is that, you know, in order to maintain the look of the house, we filled in that corner, and if you look at the rear elevation, you'll see that if it wasn't filled in, number one is we would have very difficult issue with getting in egress windows and meeting our, our building code requirement of a minimum 4% ventilation, 8% light, and also, again, to clean up the lines of the house, as most colonials you see are very simplistic in their style, so we wanted to maintain that.
The, the additional wall area you're creating allows you to get another window in that room, and that, that allows you to meet the light, the light and airflow requirement in building code.
Yes, that is correct.
Something I was unaware of, and, and just you educated me that earlier. Moving on to the rear yard setback, the rear yard setback variance is solely a function of now recognizing that space as habitable space, although it appears to have been converted historically.
Yes, that's, that's, you know, from our site survey, that was, you know, and looked like for certainly a long, long period of time, as in a lot of the houses that we survey through the shore areas, you know, don't know what the history of it is exactly, but it was, you know, basically all we're doing is raising that area to make it, you know, meet the new requirements of flood and, you know, fulfill the, the code requirements as far as all the other code issues that, that come along with that.
Circling around, around the house, now we'll touch upon the increase in building coverage is approximately 0.05 or half a percent, you're increasing your building coverage, and that's the two fill-ins, the fill-in on the left side of the house in that nook, if you would, that Roger mentioned. Touch upon the necessity of doing that and why you think that's a good idea.
Well, you know, the, the original connection to the house, and of course being five feet lower, that little nook, I'll be quite honest with you, as an architect, I'm not sure exactly why I, you know, it could have been to just try to squeeze some more windows in, but, but it's a, it's a very awkward space. You know, I see it as potentially a security issue, but also when that house is raised five feet, that nook, which is almost seven foot deep, is going to be almost 13 foot tall, kind of a strange area to be left open. And there's already roof over that area, so we're not adding to any kind of additional impervious. So it's, really, we're just kind of cleaning up that corner, you know, making it more, you know, make it more conforming to the rest of the house, and also, you know, eliminating potentially, you know, a safety issue with, you know, someplace somebody could hide around a corner. It was just, it was just a very strange area.
Landscaping in the front yard is, is another variance, and that's because of the front portion, really, that's just the trade-off of that, it's really just four square feet, am I, am I right?
Yeah, and we're, we're just, we're adjusting this, the landscaping around that to the best of our ability, and I'm sure, you know, Mr. Mooney's going to, you know, add and enhance that landscaping as he moves forward around that new porch.
And in fact, the, the lot landscaping is increasing several percent from, from a, from a non-conforming 25.4 up to about 4% up to 28.5%.
Yeah, that is correct.
The entire lot.
Yes.
Now, the only two variances that are brought about by new construction that I'll say that's not there now, like the setbacks are and coverages, are the shed roofs to the back of the house, one replacing a flat roof and one in an area with an expanded dormer. Would you touch upon both those and the necessity, if you would, for the pitch that doesn't comply?
Yeah, I mean, as far as the area over top of the dressing area on the second floor, and that was an existing flat roof. As most of you know, they're very, very hard to maintain, and certainly, you know, we're going from flat to, to, I guess it's a, it's a one and a half pitch, so that's about as much as we can get on that without affecting other parts of the structure negatively. So, you know, we did the best we could raising it up there without, you know, if we went too much higher, it's going to start to affect the other dormer on the roof there, which we're trying to bring in some natural light up there. But, you know, we also added a little bit of metal roofing on that to try and enhance that, so it wasn't just a flat rubber roof. So the metal roof will certainly add some aesthetic value to it. On the third floor area there, where there was an existing room that was expanded due to the, you know, we extended the roof over that second floor area, and, you know, that's going to be an office. There was an existing single window in there, there was no light ventilation for that room prior to that besides that little window, and we are trying to provide, you know, some additional windows, light ventilation to make that room, you know, more aesthetically pleasing.
So with those being variances, when Steve came to you, did he, was his goal for you to preserve, restore that house close to a traditional Parkway, Center Hall Colonial as you could?
Yeah, and as you can see, I mean, there's very, very little changes, and if anything that we've done really enhanced the colonial look of this house and preserved that historic value of it, it's, it's, it's a beautiful home, and, and while I'm an architect and I love designing new homes, I also love preserving and rehabbing existing old homes. I think there's, there's a beauty to that. Certainly, that Parkway area district is, is a beautiful, beautiful location, and it would be nice to see the town and the, the city preserve that as best they can. There's, there's, you know, there's a drawl to that. People, you know, a lot of my memories go back to, you know, driving through some of these old short towns and seeing these old houses, and they're going away, and it's kind of losing some of the nostalgia of, of the city. So, so we really strive to keep that as best we can, and I think we've achieved it with everything we've done. We've left the brick on there, we've tried to enhance the brick, we've, you know, added some splashes of metal roof, expanding the porch, and that porch, you know, is not just expanded just because, you know, just the aesthetics. I mean, you know, everybody wants at the shore a front porch. I mean, you know, but most of the view for a shore home is to the street, that's where things are happening, people are walking. So, you know, people sit on the front porch and they people watch, and they talk to the neighbors, and they, they socialize. So all those things were very, very important to this, this client and, and to this house, and I, and I think really it's, it's done well, and, you know, I think it's going to add a tremendous, you know, value to that neighborhood, maintaining it as it is with the slight variations that we had to make.
The board's going to roll their eyes, but we have to go through the, the land use concept here and talk about the positive criteria, the negative criteria, and what, what purposes of the Municipal Land Use Act you believe that this project advances, particularly should the variances be granted, what aspect of zoning and land use are advanced? And that's the positive criteria. One, you just talked about the aesthetic enhancement of this traditional home. Do you believe what you, what you have done enhances the project aesthetically from a, from a design standpoint and an aesthetic standpoint?
Oh, yeah, and, and some of that is really just the, the maintaining of the beauty of it and as well as, you know, enhancing it. You know, with the slight touches we had, I mean, as, if you look at this house and the pictures of it, it's an absolutely beautiful house, simplistic design, but there's such beauty to that. And, you know, it's a 1930s house, we can't get those back once they're torn down. So I think it really does add to this Parkway area and, you know, continue to add to the, to the, to the historic value of that area.
Another purpose of, of the act that is advanced is compliance, compliance, bringing into compliance the property with federal, state, and local codes, regulations, and one thing that jumped to mind, obviously, is flood compliance. In many instances, people will talk about flood compliance being just justification for variance for, for new construction, for instance, when a new house has to be brought to flood elevation. Now, this project, on the other hand, this house can remain as is, undergo minor renovations and not be brought into flood compliance, is that fair to say?
That is fair to say, but, you know, when we looked at this house and Mr. Mooney asked us to do evaluate it, you know, the existing mechanical systems were out of date, you know, some of the structure was maintained as well as it should have been, you know, some of that, the flat roof in the back, again, it's a maintenance issue and, and needed to be repaired, so in doing that, we put on a better system, which is the metal roof. You know, it's, it's just there's so many reasons to, to do this, and, and unfortunately, that pushes him to, you know, to meet that, you know, to exceed that dominance amount, which forces us to do this. But, you know, Mr. Mooney was not really excited about raising the house, but, but in order to, you know, comply with the state and federal guidelines, you know, we have to bring this house up, and, and there were so many other things that needed to be done to this to really preserve, you know, the house and the style of it, but, but bring it up to a modern, more current, you know, lifestyle. know, lifestyle where, you know, modern facilities within it and, you know, and updated facilities and updated mechanicals.
And that also, obviously, since we're bringing into flood compliance, that also advances that first purpose of the act which speaks to prevention of harm to people and to property by flood. Is that right?
Absolutely. That's the reason for raising it for not only the occupants there, but neighbors and the community.
And finally, with respect to the Land Use Act and maintaining the integrity and continuity of a neighborhood and familiarity of a neighborhood, obviously, by preserving this home and leaving it rather than tearing it down and building a new house, does maintain the character of the neighborhood, continuity of the neighborhood. Is that fair to say?
There's no question of that. And, you know, all you have to do is look at the pictures of this house and look at the fact that we're maintaining it to really see and believe that. I mean, there's no hiding what we've tried to done. It's all on paper. We've shown, you know, we're trying to maintain that. And Mr. Mooney is kind enough to allow us to do that. And, you know, with his history in this town and like that and his love of this area, I think it's important for him, it was important for him to maintain that so he can continue to feel the same way he felt maybe 50 years ago when his family was first here.
And moving to the negative criteria, do you believe the variances that are requested can be granted without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of the zone plan and substantially impairing the public good? If you could comment on that, please.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're meeting, you know, the intent of all the light and open air requirements that the town is requiring. You know, we're forced to raise the house, but we've limited what we're doing. We're not really expanding on, there's not going to be any more limitations on that latent air than what's necessary for the lift.
And do you believe the variance can be granted without substantially impairing to the public good? Do you believe any of the neighbors will be substantially impacted or affected adversely?
No, I think the benefit to them is that this house is bringing up, brought up to current code and meeting the flood standards and, you know, it's going to be safer for them in the long run. God forbid we have another hurricane Sandy.
And do you believe that this project advances that aspect of the master plan which speaks to the preservation of existing architecture and the quality of existing neighborhoods?
Yeah, without reiterating all the things I've already said, yes, that is correct.
And you're agreeable to work with Mr. Mooney in finding a location for the outside shower that either, that works with the ordinance?
Yeah, and I think we have a solution to that. I'd like to talk to him, but we can address that and I think I have a suitable solution for that.
Mr. Chairman, that's all the testimony I have. Thank you.
Are you maintaining the brick siding?
Yes.
We are.
We are. And the, where it's elevated, what's that going to be?
That's also going to be brick.
Trying to get matching with a, I guess, a water line going across to separate the two?
Great. Raise that. Anybody from the board have any questions?
Yeah.
Craig, Mama Sana?
Craig, Mike.
Craig, Mama Sana.
Craig's first.
Craig.
For the architect, I have a question on the rear pavers, are they safe? The rear pavers?
Yes, I believe, yes, they are.
There's really no grass in that backyard at all. I was wondering how the total landscape came out to what it was, but there's no grass in the back.
Yeah, that's an existing paper patio.
Roger, is that measured out?
I believe we have that all measured out in our calculations, yes.
Craig, they're increasing the coverage by adding a grass strip for the full driveway length.
Yes.
That's one more question I have on the driveway. The driveway you have showing it is 48 feet for three cars. The requirement is 18 feet per car, which comes down to 54 feet. So that fence at the top of the driveway is in the wrong location. That fence needs to be moved about six feet towards the rear yard. So the cars aren't sticking out on the sidewalk when we put three cars in there. Very important that we have 18 feet per car.
I can ask Mr. Mooney that question, but, and see if he would be, you know, acceptable to that.
We will make sure the parking complies.
We'll make the adjustment.
We have 18 feet per car.
We'll make sure it complies.
We'll make sure that complies.
Pardon?
We will make sure that complies.
The fence would be, I'm sorry, the fence would be equal to the rear of the screened in porch.
Craig, they said they would make it comply.
They would measure.
Yeah, we'll meet the 54 feet to three spaces of 18 feet.
From the front property line?
Yes, sir.
From the front property line?
Yes, sir.
All right.
This is Mike Crustaldi.
It's a question for Jim Gallantino on, they sound like they don't want to raise the house that much and they're raising it because of the duck work underneath. They're not showing any windows, so they're not pulling any games on us. I can see that, that they're doing this legitimately. But Jim, aren't we allowed to 3M the duck work and seal it and be below the 13 as long as we're above the 10? You there, Jim?
Maybe he's muted?
I don't, he's green, I don't know. But I think, I think you can drop down there and seal that duck work.
We had asked that question and I'll address it until he gets on there, but we had asked that question. And to be quite honest with you, you know, in talking with Mr. Mooney prior to this meeting, he would be completely amenable to that, but, you know, we didn't want to, we didn't want to get stuck after the fact, after this meeting, going into the town and then being held up because of that issue. So we don't know how to resolve that issue without, you know, somebody giving us something that's going to be, you know, substantial, you know, to make sure that when we get done and we go for that building permit, that we're not going to get shut down.
Mike, Rich, we can include in the resolution if that duck work can be waterproofed, as Mike says, if it can be, give us the option to drop the house to nine plus four. And I think we'll find out, but that's what happens.
We can do that if it's approved that they can lower the house. We can put that in there. Leo could take care of that.
Is Clem on to answer that? Do you have any on that, Clem?
Mike, it's Roger.
I think you're right, Mike.
I talked to Jimmy.
I think you're right.
I'm pretty sure I am, but I want to make sure.
Just so you know, we already have a detail on the plan that accompanies that we are going to do that to the duck work either way. But listen, just so, just so that everyone's aware, this is something that we would be really excited about, to be quite honest with you.
It's a 3M product that we've used and have done it, so that's.
We can put that contingency in there. That's it.
Great, great.
We're done.
We're done.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else from the board?
Richard, Roger, I talked to Jim about that today. He said as long as it's certified, we can do that.
Okay, well, it'll, so we can give him that contingency.
Yes.
We would love to, and I'm not the attorney here, but I would love to, for my sake, as the architect of record, you know, have something that's going to, you know, address that, make sure that we're okay with that.
Jack, that will be in the resolution approval.
Great. I just wanted it on the record, that's all.
Very good.
Trust me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for that.
You just put a smile on it for Mooney's face.
Anyone else from the board? All right, is there anyone from the public that would have any comments or questions?
This is Mark Schwartz, Mark and Beth Schwartz.
Okay, Mark, just be sworn in. Hang on one second, Leo.
All right, Mr. Schwartz, your address, please?
Nine South Rumsden Avenue, Morgue City.
And is your wife speaking also or just you?
Yes, she is with me as well.
Okay, and that's Beth, you said?
Her name is Beth.
Beth, okay. Can you each raise your right hand? Do you each swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
So we are the property, behind the property. And first, we're excited to see that it will be enhanced and we're looking forward to looking at a beautiful property instead of one that is falling apart. Our major concern is that the garage structure, the original garage structure is very close to the rear property line. And with the intent to convert that to living quarters officially and raise it, it's onerous that it is so close to the property. So our request would be that it either stay at that level or if it is to be raised and we understand the rationale behind it, that property and that garage be changed to conform to the required setback by Morgue City, since it will be used as a lean structure. And as we have already discussed, as you have already discussed, the coverage requirements are already exceeded, so let's take that off so we're at the 10-foot setback, which I believe is the rear property setback. I'm not exactly sure, but I believe it is. And let's conform to that if that property, if that portion of the property is to be raised along with the rest of the property. Thank you.
If you have nothing, Chris, is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
I'd like to speak. Brian Finkelstein? Yep.
Name and address, please.
My name's Brian Finkelstein, 2307 A Ridge Road, Baltimore, Maryland, 21136. I'm speaking on behalf of my 88-year-old grandmother who owns Eight South Quincy, directly next door.
Chris, do you have any issue with that?
Yep.
Okay, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yeah, I do.
Chris Ballson, you okay with that?
Is that Maggie Stetzer's grandson?
I am.
I, I'm not going to object to him speaking. I've known Mr. Stetzer for a long time and I trust, I'm not going to try and shut the guy down.
And again, not trying to be combative, I, you know, since Steve was able to give his history, I'm fifth generation on one side of my family in the area, been coming there my whole life. My great-grandmother moved there in the 1920s. My grandmother, Maggie, owned this house, I believe for about 30 years or so. My mom and uncle grew up in that house, all for preserving, all for the sheer intent of what is going on and, you know, really.
I would like to know why Maggie, I would like to know why Mr. Stetzer can't speak on her own yet.
She's on the phone, she's not comfortable and frankly, could have had a conversation well before any of this if you had reached out to her to talk about it.
Then I do object, if there's no health issue that prevents Mr. Stetzer from speaking, I don't, I don't know that it's appropriate for someone to speak on her and have a spokesperson and would object to that.
Can he speak? Is he a member of the public?
I am a speaking member.
Here's what I'll say, as a member of the public, the board can give it, we'll let him speak and the board can give it whatever way it deems appropriate.
Thank you, go ahead and speak.
Well, I'd like the board to understand that these are comments coming directly from my grandmother and the board can take that in their own suggestion. I have lots of comments. The main comment and something that hasn't been discussed in this entire process, and I'd love for my grandmother, who is on the phone and listening, someone to tell me how with a three-foot setback in between the properties, this property can be risen up the five feet without disturbing her quiet enjoyment of her property.
Are you talking about the reconstruction? Are you talking about for the rest of?
Literal, no, literal, literal construction, how that physically can take place without access to her property.
I mean, that's a construction issue, Mr. Patterson. If Mr., if the architect wants to touch upon that, that's great. But we understand that her property is private property, it can't be accessed without her permission, and we're going to go forward with that understanding.
Okay, fine.
I think it's an important question.
Well, it might be an important question, but if they come on your property, stop them. Brick, call the police. It's, they're not allowed to come on your property to do that.
And now is noted, thank you. I want to understand a little bit about, and my grandmother would like to understand a little bit about the fact that, you know, yes, these are variances, while minor, they are variances. And when you talk about the three-foot setback and he talks about, oh, I could preserve, knock this down. Well, if he knocks it down, then he's going to lose, meaning he's going to lose all of the setbacks and things like that. So there are reasons that he is keeping this and not going for preservation. We understand that. I'd like to understand more about how, a bunch of the questions were about raising the roof and we appreciate that if there's an alternative not to raise it as high, we like that. If they raise, if the amount of raise is less, does that mean the overall height will come down the exact same or they will be going in for extending?
No, there's no, the height of the structure does not change. If the height of the first floor comes down, the height of the roof will come down too.
Thank you, thank you.
Can I address you real quick?
Sure, go ahead.
So I told your grandmother, she's a wonderful, wonderful woman. I'm not sure if I met you or not, I know it was wonderful, Frank. I guess it was last summer or so. But your grandma, when I first bought the house, you know, she asked me, she goes, you're going to tear this house down? And I said, nope, not tearing the house down. I said, I bought it because I want to preserve this house. Beautiful, beautiful home. She told me she's there, she obviously got the board, built right next door, everything else. I don't want to raise this house. I'm raising the house because it's required by FEMA and it's required by the city. So I'm raising it to comply with the city. And then the other things I'm doing, I mean, I'm going to, I mean, I've got to raise the house. I don't have really a choice. The other option is to knock the house down. Yeah, you're right, I might have to move my setbacks back, but guess what? House goes a lot higher. And so I'm doing everything I can.
I'm not arguing with you over the preservation. I'm not arguing with you on a lot of these points. Again, I think there's a general frustration that this house is going to be raised directly next to her and, you know, there had been no contact and no communication. I still really would love to hear how you can raise this house without having to deal with her property and the damage to her property, but this is not the venue I've been told.
He just said he spoke to your grandma last summer.
Yep. Last, okay, how does that relate to anything that we talked about here?
It doesn't relate, Brian, and continue, Brian, it doesn't relate. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. You know, lots of comments about being neighborly and, you know, looking down from a porch into the house, the land cover is increasing even though the porch is being widened and shortened, it's still a net increase of land cover. You know, the three-foot fill-in, and again, we're really wanting the board to just note that this property is, I mean, three feet is nothing. And for the board to approve raising of this house, which again, I know is in line and there's a lot of great to do with that, I think it's a little short-sighted not to pay attention to the fact that this setback is immensely close and for that construction work to happen, I think there needs to be real coordination between the two property owners here. And that's my comment to the board.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Yes, Mike? Mike, go ahead.
Does Brian realize that we have no say on raising the house? They can raise that house and we have no say on that whatsoever.
Understood.
I mean, the variances, we have some say. But as far as raising the house and with our community rating system and all, we have no say on that.
This is Mike Richmond. His concern is not with raising the house, his concern is with the construction of being so close to the house. So that's really not under our jurisdiction. The building inspector and whoever are going to be the ones that are going to have to deal with that if there's an issue. Or hopefully, Mr. Sweeney and Mrs. Stetzer can talk and figure something out. So that's how that rolls.
Brian, we try to work with neighbors.
But also.
You got to make a point while to work with neighbors.
Ryan, this happens every day in town with those types of setbacks and there are ways of getting around it. There's also very sloppy house razors that damage property next door, but that's something that has to be taken care of if it happens. Go ahead.
This is Mark Schwartz again from Eight South Rumsden. And I do understand there's a right to raise the house, but that does not, as I understand, include the right to raise a garage structure. Am I missing something there? Is it not that the garage should remain as a garage and not be raised in accordance with the house because the garage should be at ground level?
Chris, would you answer that?
And the garage is attached to the house. So I believe that garage comes up with the house.
So I believe that garage comes up with the house as part of the lift. It doesn't, it's not required to be detached. It's not required to be removed from the house as part of the lift.
I understand that, but I've yet to see a garage that is lifted above the ground.
I understand that, Mr. Schwartz. What happens is you extend the garage doors to, if it were to remain a garage, in this instance, it's not. We're asking it to be converted.
Yeah, but your proposal is not to use it as a garage, and if the garage stays at the current plate, that's what stairs are for, to go from the garage up to the house.
I understand. That's what I said. We're asking for it to be converted in this instance. That's the request. That's why there's a variance.
Mr. Ballson, is you asking for it to be converted, or it already has been converted?
It's previously been converted. We're just legitimizing it. Whether or not that was, whether or not it was done with a permit or not, Mr. Patterson, I don't know. But right now, it does not act as a garage. I tell you that. Like many times.
That was my question, yes.
Mr. Chairman, it's Roger. Off-street parking requirements are being met, whether that's a garage or not.
Say that again?
Off-street parking requirements are being met, whether that is a garage or not.
Okay.
And while I understand that that is very close to the rear property, and raising it, I would say, is an undue hardship for the property owners, namely us and the neighbors next to us. So again, my preference would be raise the house absolutely, but something that's three feet from the property line, we prefer that it stay at the current level.
Anyone else from the public?
Brett.
I'm sorry.
Hi, it's Leslie Stetzer Finkelstein. I'm with my mom Maggie.
Okay.
And we have, yes, Brian speaks so that he...
Is Stetzer?
I'm sorry.
You need to be sworn in.
Okay, I'm ready.
Your address, please.
Leslie Stetzer Finkelstein, 2314 Velvet Ridge Drive, Owings Mills, Maryland, 21117. And my mom is here. Do you need to swear her in? She is Margaret Stetzer.
Only if she's going to speak.
Oh, okay. I'll probably just speak.
All right, Miss...
I asked my...
Do you swear to tell the truth?
I do swear.
Okay.
Yeah, it's fine. Yeah, yes, of course.
We had asked my son and Maggie's grandson to speak so that he could get our points across and maybe start a dialogue that we felt maybe that was missing. If maybe someone could take some time at some other time to speak with us and maybe tell us some of the process that might be involved, we'd feel much more reassured and comfortable with the whole...
We would be happy to do that. We would be happy to do that.
Steve, again, real quick, just so you know. You know, I've spent a lot of time looking at a lot of different lift companies. Work with my contractor as well. Architects, talked to the city, who they've used before, about, you know, their quality of work and their competency. The one I'm going with, apparently people have heard a lot, they've done a lot of work on the island. They're very competent. As far as that is concerned, it's true. I'm not trying to, this is not going to be a cheap project. I stretch your imagination. And I'm not trying to cheap it in any particular way. And they will. I mean, the plan was, tonight I'm coming to the variances. If this gets approved, then I'm going to be going ahead and lifting this house, and I'm going to be then doing the work on it. Then, of which time, I'll definitely be talking to your grandmom and your mom and talk about, you know, how we work together as neighbors. I'm going to be living next door. I want to be a friendly neighbor. I've had some great conversations so far. Yeah, it's been last summer. I just got back recently, so I've not been over there yet. And this was all about getting approval. Once I have approval, if I get that, hopefully I'm going to deem that board. Talking to your grandmom. We're going to work this out. We're going to be obviously good neighbors, and everything, hopefully, is going to be great.
Steve, should you get approved tonight? Before the house is lifted, would you give the Stetser's the benefit of how it's going to work mechanically? How it's going to happen? Just have a conversation with them?
Yeah, I mean, we'll sit down. We'll go through, we'll go with the other, with the firm. It's going to do it. We'll talk about what we're going to do, how we're going to do it, what the timeline is going to be to do it. I mean, all that. You know, I'm not, this is, we're not trying to hide anything here.
No, I didn't feel that you were, and that wasn't the point of it. But information is always good, and then we kind of will know how to move forward with this. And that would be great, because we're looking forward to having... Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else from the public? Public portion is closed. Any other questions from the board? Comments? Leo, would you read a motion?
I will. See variance application. Someone needs to make a motion for see variance relief for the following. They're all set forth in Roger's report, but I'll summarize them, or I'll go through them. Side yard setback to the building on the right side of three feet where eight feet is required. Side yard setback to the porch on the right side of three feet where eight feet is required. Combined side yard setback to the building of 13.15 feet where 18.5 feet is required. Combined side yard setback to the porch of 13.15 feet where 18.5 feet is required. Rear yard setback to the building of 3.3 feet where 16 feet is required. Building coverage variance of 44.6%, where 35% is the permitted maximum. Roger, the front yard landscaping area, do they still need that variance, do you think?
Let me confirm something real quick with Jack. Jack Smith. Jack, you there?
Yes.
You said that the net gain of that front porch is four square feet?
Yes, I believe so.
With the addition of the grass strip in the driveway that's within the front yard, I calculated that to be 54 square feet. So you're, the front yard landscaping, even though it still doesn't comply, you're not making it worse? Because that variance goes away. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
So we can eliminate that variance?
I think if that front yard landscaping, I'm not sure if, maybe I misunderstood how it's written in the ordinance, but I thought it was from the face of the front towards the street and didn't include down the side. So I think that's how that calculation came about.
It goes to the face of the house.
What's that? I'm sorry?
It goes to the front yard setback to the house, not the porch.
Right, right.
So some of that strip, Jack, is calculated to the front yard?
Yeah, some of that is calculated. And we do have that calculated in some of the front yard landscaping.
Okay. We'll keep it as a variance. It's 1%.
It's 1%, a 1% variance for the front yard.
I'd like to eliminate it as a variance. I'm not saying I don't. I'm just saying I, maybe I misunderstood how your ordinance is read. You know, sometimes there are...
Jack, do you know if you used a section of that strip towards the front yard? Calculated or not?
As far as I know, we did, yes.
Okay.
All right, so it's a front yard landscape variance. 60% is required. They're proposing 54% down from 55%. Roof pitch variance on the dormer...
Maybe calculate different, I don't know.
1.512 pitch is proposed, where a 512 pitch is required. And then on a portion of the second floor, right now, there's that flat roof. They're proposing a 212 or a 512 is required. The conditions will be everything in Mr. McCarnan's report, unless otherwise modified. All representations made by the applicant during the course of the hearing. Third condition will be if that ductwork can be waterproofed. They'll lower the house to, I believe, nine plus four feet. And then, I know Craig mentioned something about the three spaces, the three parking spaces, which I didn't fully articulate. So maybe someone can help me with that.
They will provide 54 feet to accommodate three legal parking spaces.
So stated. Okay. That's the motion someone needs to make.
Okay, motion.
I'll second it.
Tom Collins.
Normally, in a situation like this, I don't like to see as many variances as we're seeing. Unfortunately, in this case, though, this property actually embodies a time and an era in a neighborhood that we really need to preserve in Morgate. And I think that the variances are really de minimis. I think that the neighbors can work along. I think Mr. Mooney's doing a fantastic job of actually preserving a neighborhood and a history in Morgate and adding something good to the community. He's using a good builder. He's using a good architect, local people. I think the positives definitely outweigh any negatives. I'd rather not see another just cookie cutter box put up. I think this house is beautiful, and I think he's going to enjoy it. So I vote in favor.
Clem Wazlowski.
Being able to bring this house down another foot or so because of the ductwork situation would certainly help. I think the actual landscaping in the front yard is going to be very important aesthetically to this house. And it's really not indicated in any detail on the variances. I hope the owner pays particularly attention to this. I totally agree with Tom. None of the variances are of such an extent as they offset the fact that we're being able to save one of the fine older homes in Morgate. I live in terror of these continuing demolitions and the architectural crap that's put up in their place. I vote for that project.
Richard Patterson.
I also vote for it. I think the number of variances is high, but I really think each one is de minimis. We have a roofed pitch that's very low, but it's actually an improvement on what's been there. I have seen, over the past five years, houses raised within inches of other houses. It works. If you have a bad contractor, then that's a different story. But I have seen it happen again and again. This house is not going up anywhere near what other houses are going up. He could put parking underneath. It's crazy what some houses are doing. This is really a low raise. And hopefully, much less if it works out with the ceiling off the dentwork underneath. I think Mr. Mooney has done a tremendous job putting this together. And from what I see from him tonight, it seems to me he's very willing to speak with the Stetser's and let them know what's going on. He's not flipping this house. He's not a speculator. He wants to live there. Seems like a nice enough guy for me. I've heard bad things about him, but I have never seen that myself. But I absolutely approve this application.
Michael Cristaldi.
We've got an old, beautiful Morgate house. I would hate to see it go down. He's raising it for our CRS, which will help our community rating system. I think he's doing a great job with that, listening to about the ductwork. I think, I'm pretty sure you're allowed to do that, and I would hope that it goes through. If you tear it down, they're going to build what I call a plastic house. I'm in the building business. I love the brick. And I love what you're doing with the house. Not an easy one. It's a challenge. You've got it. Go for it. And I think everybody will be happy with it. I vote yes.
Jim Gallantino.
Hey, Mag. Jim Gallantino. Haven't seen you for a little bit. I should stop by and say hi. Try to get you on board with what they're going to do next door and back of you. Hey, Leslie, how you doing? We'd love to reach out to you guys at some point. Make sure we coordinate this job, and there's no hiccups. Hardship isn't a lift. I think at this point, it's been proven that the hardest job is lifting the houses. Anybody could tear a house down. Anybody could build a new house. To raise a house is real, it's surgery. Requires a lot of detail and a lot of work. Like I said, Leslie, Mag, just give me a call. I'm still at the same number. Mag, you know the number well. 609-822-1974. I'll be there. I'll take your call, and let's get this job going. I approve this application.
Margaret Gubernalti.
Hi. I certainly have to agree with the other board members. We're saving a classic home here. It, as object of saving that classic home, it must be raised, so we can't do anything about that. There are many variances, but I see them as de minimis. And as to raise the house, we need to see these variances take place. I don't see a detriment to the public good at all as long as Mrs. Stetser's satisfied as to what's going on and the neighbors behind. I have to save the classic home and vote yes.
Michael Richmond.
Yeah, this is talking to the neighbors behind. That structure's been there forever, and I understand that it's very close to the property line. But I'm also a builder, and we've raised many houses. And when the garages are attached, they come up with the house. So, you know, we tried to get it, but we tried to get the house to go down a couple feet. And I think that's going to work. So I think it's an improvement to the neighborhood, and I'm going to approve the project.
The application passes with seven votes in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris. Rich.
Very much, everything.
Rich.
Mrs. Stetser? Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Rich, can we take a quick three-minute break?
Okay. Three-minute break.
Thank you.
I'm going to resume the recording. Okay, Rich.
Okay, we're back in session. The next case is Ralph Levy and Janice Berg Levy, 40 North Clarendon Avenue, block 204.01, lot 10, located in the S-25 district, seeking see variance relief for rear yard setback, building coverage, and possibly others in order to construct an addition. Taxes and water payments are current, and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McCarnan, your report, please.
Thank you, Board Chairman and Board Members. My report is dated June 23, 2020, in regard to the application of Ralph Levy and Janice Berg Levy at 40 North Clarendon Avenue, block 204.01, lot 10, within the S-25 zoning district. This is a see variance planning and zoning report. This is a substantial benefit variance. The background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the city of Morgate in order to construct a new addition to an existing single-family dwelling on North Clarendon Avenue between Retina and Winchester Avenues. The addition proposes, proposed requires a few variances, and will be discussed below. Page two is the zoning chart, showing all the zoning compliance and non-compliance. There are existing non-compliant setbacks and whatever. Next page, on page three, I disclose the documents reviewed to generate the report. Section three on page three is the variances required. There are two. One is a rear yard setback to the building, whereas the rear yard setback required is 20% of the lot depth or 10 feet minimum, or for 20% equals 12.5 feet. 14.6 feet exists, and 10 feet is proposed. That's according to Schedule B-1 on the schedule in the section 175, Attachment 4. Building coverage, whereas 40% is the maximum building coverage is permitted, 41% exists, and 44% is proposed. Again, this is section 175, Schedule B-1, Attachment 4. No waivers have been requested. All the checklist items are compliant. The comments are as follows. The rear yard is already being encroached upon by the elevated deck, and what the addition proposed requires variance for rear yard setback to the proposed second floor addition. The expansion of the property being proposed does not compromise the CRS program as no addition is below base flood. The rear yard setback is 2.5 feet short of what is required, so that variance is basically for 2.5 feet. The combined side yard setbacks are not being met at 3.3 feet where 14.8 feet is required. This is not a variance, but it illustrates that three to four setback requirements are not being met. Building coverage, I discussed the building coverage that requires a variance. Similar to the last application, because the garage is attached to the principal structure, it gets counted in the building coverage. If the garage were detached, the building coverage would likely comply. The property is subject to landscape requirements and Margate's ordinance, in particular to the street trees and truck count. A grass cover requirement is required. This is a C-1 and C-2 criteria case, and proper testimony is required. That concludes the report, though our recommendations based on the testimony provided, and they can agree or disagree. Mr. Chairman?
All set? I can just barely hear Roger's head there.
You didn't, you're ready, Chris?
Yeah, I'm all set. You ready?
I read the report. Didn't it come across?
Yeah, very good. Members of the Board, Chris Baylonsen for Janice and Ralph Levy, who own the property, Block 204.01, Lot 10, it's 40 North Clarendon Avenue, make this application to the Board, seeking two variances in order to build an addition at the second floor of their existing home on Clarendon Avenue, which gives them a little bit more space in their master bedroom as everybody gets a little older and privacy becomes more precious. The Bergs have this really nice home there. The addition is above an existing porch, so really not covering any more ground, so to speak, although the difference between lot coverage and building coverage comes into play. We are going to comply with the existing rear yard setback, which is set by the established front porch, back porch of 10 feet, which will be honored, although not complying. Therefore, a coverage variance is necessary, as is that rear yard setback variance. The Bergs, I believe, are in attendance with us. At least Ralph is, and Peter did the plan, so Peter can be sworn and give the Board the benefit of his qualifications.
All right. Mr. Weiss, name and address for the record, please. Pete Weiss, can you hear me?
Pete, it cares? Pete's on the air.
There you go. Where was I? 101 North Washington Avenue, Margate.
All right. And that's Pete Weiss for the record. Mr. Weiss, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give, be the truth?
Yes.
And Mr. Weiss is a recognized architect, and we accept his credentials because he's been before our Board a number of times.
Peter, you prepared the plan, submitted to the Board for their consideration.
Yes.
And when the Levy, Berg, Levy's came to you for this project, what is it that they were trying to achieve, and what have you designed for them at their existing house on Clarendon Avenue?
Well, there's a master bedroom on the second floor in the rear, which is only about 11 feet wide or deep, I guess, front to back. So, they live here about six months of the year, and they just wanted a little bit more space in their master bedroom, and also add some closet space, because right now there's only one fairly small closet for that room. So, by adding on the rear, the room would get to be about 15'9" deep, and we add a small walk-in closet on the left side.
So, the project involves only the second floor and essentially the back of that bedroom closet area exclusively?
No. There's a small addition on the third floor, which is a shower. We're just, there's a bathroom there, I'm sorry, powder room there now.
That can be built without a variance?
Yes.
Okay. The additions to the rear is bumping out how far?
Altogether. It's a...
Put it this way, how far into the setback, Pete?
Okay. We're coming at four foot, seven and a half inches, so we'd be two and a half feet into the required setback in the rear.
So, although the addition's four and a half feet, the encroachment is only about two and a half feet, is that right?
Correct.
And you have pulled it in on the sides, so it doesn't kick in any side yard setback relief? Is that fair to say?
Correct, yes.
And what kind of space does that give the Levy's? About four more feet of width, making the room eleven feet to about 15 feet and change?
Yes.
Nothing at the first floor?
Correct.
And the reason you stopped at the rear porch is to maintain that 10-foot rear yard setback in that backyard that they have?
We're actually a little bit inside the porch. If we went to the porch, we'd be less than 10 feet to the rear, so...
Okay.
But I thought it was important to hold the 10-foot, because that's sort of the default minimum.
Fair enough. Talk about the coverage variance. Why, how does the coverage variance come into play if you're short of the back porch?
Yeah, the coverage may seem a little high, but it's largely driven by the fact that it has the attached garage on the left side. So, the existing second floor is only 833 square feet, which is fairly small. So, with the addition, it would still be at 920 square feet, which is still only, if you looked at the second floor by itself, that's 37% building coverage at the second floor. So, it's kind of skewed a little bit, just because we have the one-story attached garage on the left side. It kind of throws the numbers off. But with regard to building coverage and the side setbacks...
Why does building coverage increase if the addition is over the porch? It's over an area that's covered.
Yeah, well, the porch doesn't count as building coverage. It's not building.
Fair enough. And the increase in coverage is what?
3%? Yes.
Pete, you, then, that's the only variance is then are the rear yard setback and the coverage, is that right?
Yes.
Now, will this addition, can you see it from the street? Will it change the front facade of the house at all?
Nope, not at all.
Do you think this addition, and the way you've designed it, will have any impact on the neighbors to the side?
No.
Okay. And why is that?
Because we meet the side door setbacks. I mean, we're fairly substantial. The addition itself is only, what, 18, less than 19 feet wide, so...
Okay. And you maintain 10 feet in the rear yard, is that right?
Yes.
So, you don't think there'll be any impact on the privacy of white areas with neighbors to the rear?
No.
That's all I have, Mr. Patterson, from Mr. Weiss. I know you've had a long night, and I don't want to bore you any longer, if I don't have to.
Anyone else from the Board have any questions?
I have one. Pete, the...
Who's that?
Say again?
Clem.
It's Clem.
Clem, go ahead, Clem.
Yeah, I have a question for Pete. The shower on the third floor, that's within spaces that already exist, isn't it?
Yes. It's above the, yes, because the way the roof is shaped, that would be above the existing second floor, meets all the setbacks.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I'm opening the public portion. Is there any neighbors or anyone from the public that would like to comment or have any questions? Hello? Who was that?
That was me saying, "No."
Oh. All right, public portion is closed. Any other comments from the Board? Leo, would you read the motion?
Yep. It's a motion for C-variants relief. There's two variances. Variances, they are as follows. Rear yard setback to the building of 10 feet or 12.5 feet is required. A building coverage variance of 44% or 40% is the permitted maximum. The conditions, we will just say that the applicant will comply with any condition in Mr. McCornan's report, unless otherwise addressed on the record, and the applicant will comply with any representations made on its behalf during the course of the hearing.
Fair enough.
Motion and a second.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Tom Collins?
This case here seems to be very de minimis. You have two small variances. I don't really see any detriments to the expansion. It's going to have a minor impact to the neighborhood. I think it's a positive criteria. It's going to improve the house and improve the neighborhood a little bit, so I vote in favor.
Clem Wazlewski?
It's a very minimal variance request. Doesn't appear to have any negative impact on the neighbors to the side or rear, and has no effect on viewing from the front, so I vote in favor.
Richard Patterson?
I agree with the two previous Board Members and I vote in favor.
Michael Ri, I'm sorry, Michael Cristaldi? Michael Cristaldi?
There you go. I'm sorry. I'm getting scared. This is the third time tonight I agree with Tom. I approve this application for the same reasons he did. Thank you.
Jim Gallantino?
I agree with Mike, Rich, and Clem, and Tom.
I agree with the other Board Members. The two variances are de minimis. It will not be a negative impact on the neighbors, and I vote in favor.
And Michael Richmond?
Yeah, very small variance, no impact. I agree with everyone else.
The application passes with seven votes in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you all very much. Have a good night. See you later on.
Thanks.
Next case. Eric Silverstein, 106 North Canyon Avenue. Matt Glazer, would you please mute your mic, please?
I got him.
All right. Eric Silverstein, 106 North Canyon Avenue, Block 313.02, Lot 21, located in the S-30 district, seeking a minor subdivision and C-variants relief for side yard setback, combined side yard setback, landscaping, and possibly others. Taxes and water payments are current, and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McCornan, your testimony, please.
Thank you, Board Chairman and Board Members. My report is dated June 22, 2020, in regard to the application of Eric Silverstein, minor subdivision, 106 North Canyon Avenue, Block 313.02, Lot 21. It's within the S-30 zone. It's a subdivision with C-variants, so it's a planning and zoning report. The background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the City of Margate in order to subdivide one existing oversized lot into two lots that will each comply with bulk standards for the zone. However, since the house on the site is to remain, the subdivision creates two variances related to the existing structure. If the house were removed, this subdivision would be a by right subdivision, and would be reviewed and approved by the City Subcommittee. Page two is the zoning chart for this application, listing both proposed lots. They are named as Lot A and Lot B. Documents reviewed are on the bottom of page two, including the Engineers' Report and Minor Subdivision Review Letter from Remington &amp; Verna, dated June 22, 2020. Section three lists the variances required. There are two. The first one is cumulative side yard setback for proposed Lot A, whereas the minimum cumulative side yard setback is 37% of the lot width or 15.5 feet. 53.9 feet exists and 14 feet is proposed, again, because of a new lot line being created that shortens that length. The second variance being required is lot coverage or vegetative surface coverage, proposed Lot A, whereas the minimum lot coverage for vegetative surface is 35%. 88.3% exists, and 18.1% is proposed. Again, that's purely a function of the by right subdivision line. Waivers requested, City Engineers' Report, I don't think there are many. The comments are as follows. I'm not going to list them all, but they're self-explanatory. The cumulative setback deficiency is caused by existing dwelling remaining and the subdivision being created. The lot width for Lot A that has a dwelling is 42 feet wide to accommodate the existing driveway, and Lot B is 40 feet wide. That's why they're not 41 feet each, I imagine. The improvements are not required to be demolished. All bulk requirements are being met for lot standards. Grading plan for proposed Lot B is recommended. The lot numbers must be assigned by the Tax Assessor's Office and will be required to be labeled on the perfected plan. Any deed restrictions and all covenants, easements, et cetera, shall be submitted and noted on the plans. I don't think there are any. The subdivision plan must comply with the MAP filing law requirements as mentioned in the Engineers' Report. And the last two items, that's just a housekeeping item, they list two items that aren't in the ordinance anymore, so they should be removed from the zoning chart. Again, they just have to comply with the standards of the subdivision and the Engineers' Report, and that concludes my report. Mr. Chairman?
Brian Callahan of the Law Firm, Callahan, Thompson, Thompson, on behalf of Eric Silverstein. Once again, all jurisdiction requirements are met. Roger laid out his report fairly well, in the sense of it's a minor subdivision. The Silversteins have owned the property for over 50 years. Eric is a beneficiary of Eleanor's last will and testament. He's entered into a contract to purchase the house and keep the house, which is in excellent condition. Nobody wanted to tear it down in the family, so we decided to keep it. When you go back and look at the original deed to the property back in 1953, it was listed as tract one and tract two. Somewhere in the last 70 years, it was consolidated for some reason, but it was always tract one and tract two. When you look at your tax, it goes from Lot 20 to this one is 21. The next lot is 23. So, it was clearly two lots originally somehow consolidated. We want to unconsolidate them. Two variances, as they requested, combined, going from a requirement of 15.54 to 14.8, and the landscaping. You've gone past the house. Eleanor, in her heyday, had won numerous awards for landscaping. House in the front is fully landscaped. Street trees are out front. I have Arthur Chu, who's a professional planner. I'd like to have him sworn in, Leo, and he can just walk you through positives and negatives for keeping this minor subdivision, so I can get you guys home.
Mr. Chu, name and address for the record, please.
Yes, I'm Arthur Chu, I'm a professional engineer and professional planner. I have presented before this Board before.
And please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give, be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Rich, do you, I recall Mr. Chu, do we accept his credentials?
I do. Would you give your qualifications, please?
Yes, I'm a licensed engineer, licensed planner in the state of New Jersey. I was a city engineer for the city of Lursson City for 10 years. I've presented before this Board before. I'm a licensed engineer, graduated from Princeton University. Not sure if you need anything else.
No, we'll accept your qualifications.
Arthur, why don't you describe very quickly for the Board exactly what we're doing in the variance relief that we need?
Sure. I don't know if I can get control of the screen, so I can share my screen.
Yeah, hold on.
So, I have before you a photo from the front of the house. This is the house that we're looking to preserve. It's what we call not a plastic house. It's a brick house. One of the Board Members, like, for the new houses, the plastic houses, we're looking to preserve this house. As you can see, it's a smaller house in structure, well-preserved house, family house. The owner, the family's had it for 70 years, looking to pass it on to the third generation here, so he can raise his family in the town of Margate. If this variance isn't passed, it would end up being torn down and could become a by right subdivision, because there are two conforming lots here, as is noted. The issues that we're having here and the reason for it is I should have the plan before you now. As you can see, we're having an issue with the side yard. You can see my mouse pointer here. We have 3.1 feet, where, which doesn't meet the minimums. And then we have, you add in the 10.9, and we're at the 14. the 10.9, and we're at the 14 feet, where, again, does not meet the minimal requirement of the 15.8 that we're looking for, the, it's pretty much a slam dunk case here, that if we don't get these variances approved, it will become a by right subdivision, and two new houses will be placed on this property, we're looking to preserve the nature and character of the neighborhood, it will be, it's a smaller house, so more light and air is there, also like to note that these variances only go to this house, so if at any time in the future, this house is torn down, these variances disappear, and it needs to conform, or if they're looking to do variances, again, they need to come before you as a board, again, to get these approvals.
Arthur, do you see the variances having any impact on the character of the neighborhood?
No, because this is, this house is the character of the neighborhood, if anything, the variances aren't granted, it's going to change the character of the neighborhood to the newer style of plastic house, this is preserving the historic nature of what Margate was when it originally was developed, this house is over 70 years old, so this is what we're looking at as the character of the neighborhood.
And once again, single family, single family zone, so you don't see any type of substantial detriment to the zone plan or the zoning ordinance?
I do not.
Gentlemen, I know it's been a long night, I don't have anything else, I'm opening up to the board.
Sorry, I think I'm back on now, any other questions from the board, any comments from the board?
Is he rich?
Yes, Steve.
I just, I know I don't have a vote or say on this, but that's my neighborhood, so I'm recusing myself.
Oh, okay, so you're just putting that on the record?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, it's my neighborhood too, it used to be my neighborhood, we used to call it the witch house, not for, not for who lived in there, but because of the way the house looked, we always loved that house.
Beautiful house.
Are you taking questions from?
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet.
Mr. Chairman.
We'll get to the normal people after we're done with the board.
Mr. Chairman, it's Roger.
Any other questions, any other comments from the board, questions?
Rich, it's Roger, I had one comment.
Roger, go ahead.
I just want to make a note that the front yard prevailing setback for Lot B is to be determined, because we don't know what the prevailing setback will be once that lot is subdivided, so that should not, that should be, to be d.
Okay, Mike Cristaldi. Mike Cristaldi, you had a question?
Yeah, I'm here, I like my new plastic house coming up again, I like it. You get that?
No, I don't.
We got that.
Okay, you got it, at least somebody got it, thank you.
Okay. Uh, now I'm going to open it up to the public, if anyone has neighbor, anyone has a question or comment, please identify yourself.
Sure, Mark Schwartz, 107 North Lancaster.
Okay, and Mr. Schwartz, do you swear, please raise your right hand, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead, thank you.
Uh, you'll have to excuse me, this is my first experience with this kind of zoning planning, and as best I can tell, I think that our house abuts the back of this house, or, and at least part of the property, and so, just a simple question, with, will any of these variances have any effect on the backyard of the house, encroaching on our property at 107 North Lancaster?
I think the variances have to do with the existing house, so nothing will change, is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
That is correct.
Right, so the variances are because we're taking the yard away from the house, so nothing will change with the existing house, but by subdividing, it creates these variances, so you won't see any change.
And then presume, presumably if a new house is built on the second lot, it would have to abide by the same criteria for houses that are in that neighborhood, in terms of front to back?
It will have to meet, yes, there's no variances requested, it will have to meet all the requirements with a new house, yes.
Great, thank you.
But thank you, Mr. Schwartz, anyone else have any questions or comments from the public? Public portion is closed, any other comments or questions from the board? All right, Leo, would you please read the motion?
Yeah, and, and Brian, real quick, in the, the engineer report, I guess you want submission waivers from those things in 1A, and you'll comply with those, with the other comments?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, so someone needs to make a motion, it's a minor subdivision application to create two lots, and by virtue of the subdivision, the existing house triggers two variances, one for the combined side yard setback on the lot where the house is, 14 feet, where 15.5 feet is required, and the other for the vegetative, or vegetative surface coverage on the lot where the house is, 35% is required, and there will be 18.1%. The, there's also some submission checklist waivers set forth in the Remington and verdict engineering review letter dated June 22, 2020, the conditions will be that the applicant will comply with all conditions in Mr. McLarnon's report of June 18, and the city engineer's report of June 22, unless otherwise discussed or modified on the record.
We'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Tom Collins.
Well, for once, I think I need to agree with Mike Cristaldi, it's nice not to see a plastic house go in there, but, I think, I think it's very minor subdivision, I like the fact that they're going to keep the character of the neighborhood and save one of the two, one house, which, instead of putting up two new ones, and it's just going to be nicer for Margate, and I see no detriments to the neighborhood, only pluses, so I vote in favor.
Clem Wazleski.
Well, certainly, all praise to the owner for saving this fine old house, it really takes me back, back in the 40s, in the summertime, I cut the grass for the house and the side yard here, for the owner, his name was Al Crawford, he owned a grocery store on Granville Avenue between Vander and Atlantic, a little deja vu here, so I certainly vote in favor.
Richard Patterson.
Well, if we're reminiscing, I went to school with Leah Silverstein, from kindergarten through high school, we didn't consider her a witch either, it was just the fact that the house looked so skinny. The, the variances that we're voting on change nothing from what's there, it's just created, if these lots were too small, I would absolutely vote no, but the lots are big enough for houses, and then, nothing will change because of the variances that we're granting, so it cannot create any hardships for the neighbors, so I congratulate Eric on keeping the house, and I vote yes.
Michael Cristaldi.
I came into this with a definite no, and then I thought, we just saved two brick houses in Margate tonight, I definitely vote yes on this.
Jim Gallantino.
I don't know, I, I've never heard a story about Clem cutting grass, so that kind of, I think I'm going to go with Clem, and then, well, Rich, of course, stating the facts, I agree with the whole board on this one, thank you.
Margaret Guber Nalti.
Um, I also agree with the board members on this, the variances are de minimis, we get to save a house, so I vote in favor.
Craig Palmisano.
Wouldn't that be Mike Richmond's vote?
No, it's nine votes.
Okay, well, I agree with the board members, it's a beautiful home to save, and I love renovation work, and I'm, I'm in favor.
Mr. Palmisano, never question Palma.
Thank you. Joseph DiGirolamo.
Yes, I agree with the other board members, it makes a lot of sense to approve this, I vote yes.
And Michael Richmond.
I think it's a great house, I'm glad we're saving it, I'm going to vote yes.
The application passes with nine votes in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you very much for staying this late at night to have a final hearing for us.
Thank you, Brian, you made a good case.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, Brian.
Good seeing you, Brian.
Good to see everyone, Tom.
Okay, Roger, would you start the discussion on the proposed, the proposed zoning changes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as you're aware, we've been discussing some of these changes for quite a while, the first one is building height, we don't have a standard, we have 28 foot, and we have 30 foot for building height, we've been talking about making it 30, a standard 30 feet across the board, and you can have 28 foot with a, with an exception, to achieve the 30 foot height, everyone that's coming in is getting that, and, so we're just going to go 30 feet across the board. The next one is spas and hot tubs, to differentiate from pools, allow less setbacks, and allow two sides against a building, no fences required if there's a locking lid, some of these yards just aren't large enough to have a pool, so some, you know, the, the next structure would be a spa or hot tub, and half the time, they need a, a variance, or they're just installed illegally, and we don't find out until too late, and that becomes an issue. The third one is front yard setbacks, as I stated before, this is one of my long-term goals, is for front yard setbacks to have a standard number, it may differ from route, from road to road, or block to block, but the two I want to look at is Vetner Avenue in the Parkway section, currently, it's prevailing setback across the city, that's a problem, because, like I said, that one subdivision we had tonight, the setback's going to change with that other house, because the lot line, we added a lot, so Vetner Avenue in the Parkway section, and Quincy Avenue in the Parkway section, I consider that, that's the access of the Parkway, they both have wider than normal right of ways, so I want to have a standard setback for that, as you can see, in that one application tonight, the front yard setback was 17.8 feet, I'd like to maintain that, instead of houses getting closer and closer and closer to the street, that's not what we want, the last item is to revisit the hotel overlay zone, one item is to reduce the allowable height that was originally included in that recommendation, and also, the, the recommended height was about 220 feet, if I recall correctly, and we want to, the board of commissioners, we, we've been discussing it kind of off the QT, that was way too high, so we want to get it down to around 110 feet, just in that one overlay zone, and also eliminate the 20% requirement for hotel and transitional use, transient use, we feel that we, that's probably not going to work, and again, this is not for a vote tonight, this is just to give the board a heads up, probably at the end of next month, this, this could be, back to the planning board for consent of consistency to the master plan, again, the ordinance will be submitted by the governing body, and approved by the governing body, or, if that time comes, I, it may or may not, I don't know, but this is just a heads up, to be transparent to everyone out there listening, we're not trying to hide anything, we're just moving ahead, letting everybody know that this could be coming, I, I know, at least, the, the building height's coming for the 30 feet, so it's just a courtesy, if there's any questions from the board members, let me know.
Board, is there any questions from the board?
Are you going to distribute the information on this?
Once I get it, yeah.
Okay, I'm going to, now I'm going to open it up to the public, if anyone has any questions or comments, again, we're not voting on anything tonight, if anyone's there regarding the greenhouse, we are not voting or doing anything, the, whatever is being done, is being done at the city commission level, if you have objections, or you are for it, I would strongly recommend that you let the city commissioners know what your thoughts are, so if anyone now would like to speak from the public, please identify yourself, I will call you one at a time, you will be sworn in, and you can say what you will.
And, Rich, the one, the one good thing.
Mr. Chair, good evening, this is Paul Baranowski speaking again, was here earlier.
You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, representing the Island House Condominium Association, and we thanked the board for advising the public that this consideration was going to be undertaken again, with regard to those ordinance changes as outlined by Mr. McLarney, we just want the board to be aware, the association continues to have an interest in the issue of permitted height in the proposed overlay district, we participated in the, in the discussion when the issue came up a few years ago, we want to make sure we're getting notice of any proposed zoning changes affecting the permitted height within the overlay area, to the extent, the board is going to review the planning issues of any proposed ordinance, and compare it to consistency for the master plan, and the city's going to rely on the board for that planning review, we want to make sure we're engaging with the board in a dialogue as well, otherwise, it goes to the city, and the city might foreclose some discussion of planning issues on the basis that they may be relying on the board to review those, so, the height issue, we understand, goes, it, it's, it's not specific to the greenhouse, but it would include the greenhouse, so, under the current zoning standards, they would currently need a D6 variance to build at a height greater than, I guess, 38 and a half feet high, based on the 35 foot maximum height that's currently permitted, so, you know, the association's concerned that the new ordinance could permit development over 100 feet high, where currently, it's the permitted maximum with a C variance, would be only 38 and a half feet high, so that changes the criteria that would apply when that type of development would come before the board, and it triggers concerns about impacts on scenic resources, under CAFRA rules, and about high-rise structures, scenic resources, impacts from wind, and we just want, you know, again, the board and the city both to make sure that you're harmonizing your ordinances and your planning with the goals and objectives of CAFRA to the extent, you know, greatest extent possible, so, those are the comments I had to offer on behalf of the association, I know you have more people waiting to maybe make some comments for your consideration, I understand there will be further processes involved, and it'll be subject to public comment, so I'll, I'll concede the rest of the time here to others to make their, their comments, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baranowski, someone else identify themselves, please?
And, Rich, it's Leo, since, since this isn't an application, we don't have to swear anybody in, we can just have them state their name and address, and they can.
Okay, fine, so anyone from the public have any comments?
Hello, this is Peter Primavera.
Peter, you're recognized, you don't need to be.
But you should state your address.
My name is Peter Primavera, I'm representing two organizations, one is Peter Primavera Partners, which is a historic preservation consulting firm, and the other is the National Landmarks Alliance, which is an alliance of organ, of the 2,600 national historic landmarks around the country, I'll be very, very quick, gentlemen, because I realize the late hour, and I certainly support your, your endorsement of non-plastic houses, as a historic preservation expert, I was thrilled to hear that discussion tonight, throughout the, throughout the debate and the questions, but, above and beyond plastic houses, there is one historic resource in Margate that is a national historic landmark, there are only 2,600 national historic landmarks in the entire country, 58 in New Jersey, and Lucy is one of them, and I have been made aware of the proposed overlay, the height changes, and things like that, and what I want to say is, first of all, if you live there in Margate, you know, you're proud of it, you put it on your water tower, you promote visitation, you bring your friends and, and, and visitors there, and you should be proud of it, but, I have to tell you, as someone who is not from Margate, I live up in Summit, in Union County, you have one of the most extraordinary historic resources in the United States sitting there, one of the only 2,600 national historic landmarks, the building is a national historic landmark, it's on the New Jersey State Register, it's on the National. on the National Register of Historic Places, it's on the New Jersey Coast Perimeter Trail Register, and it's in fact, a part of the municipal master plan.
Next. Did he go away?
Yeah, his connection failed.
Okay.
Okay, we'll get, we'll get back to him. Is there, at this point, is there anyone else? I'd like to get back to Peter, but until he gets back, let's take the next person. Henry, Peter?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Okay. Peter, we lost you.
Okay, I'm back now.
We lost you. Before we start the conversation, would you give your contact information to Roger McLarnin at the city?
Oh, yeah. What I'll do is, tomorrow morning, I'll email my contact information, my resume and my firm's experience, and also my websites for the National Historic Landmarks Alliance.
Your contact will be Roger McLarnin, the city planner at Margate. So, if you would contact him, I'd give your information. Now, you can continue with your, what you were saying.
Okay, sorry I lost you. But really, what I want to say is, is I think when CAFRA reviewed, New Jersey under the CAFRA regulations, reviewed this previous project for a larger tower to the north of Lucy, CAFRA had concerns about the view shed, about the proximity of these tall buildings to Lucy, which never existed historically. And the one thing that CAFRA did not know, but they do now know as a result of information that's been supplied to them within the last two weeks, is Lucy was built to be seen. And I mean, that makes sort of a common sense statement. But, in the last CAFRA review of the project, what they did is, they talked about Lucy's view of the ocean, and a visitor in Lucy going up on top and what you can see from there. What they did not consider, and what is fundamental, and obviously, anybody in Margate knows this, is Lucy was built to promote Margate, to promote real estate development in the area, to promote investment. Lucy was built to be seen. And so, the new CAFRA review applications that would result from any new construction in this historic overlay are going to be very, very different, very, very difficult to get. And finally, what I'd also say is, I think the action of the city, and I know it's not the planning board, but the action of the city to actually create this overlay may also be reviewable under state, other state and other federal regulations to protect historic sites. And all of those regulations give special protection to a national historic landmark. So, I'll close it there. If you have any questions, I certainly am available to answer questions. But, I think the big point is, anything that gets built in proximity to Lucy, anything, particularly of any height beyond what is traditional, well, as you said, the non-plastic house scale and mass in Margate, anything that gets built that's beyond that is detrimental to Lucy on not only his grounds of historical significance, but also could have physical effects, from shadows, from changing the wind patterns, from vibration from new construction, various, various things. And so, we're working with about six other preservation organizations to come together to come to Margate and present what we feel is an objection to the overlay that could
Okay, I think we got, he's cut off again. I think we have his point at least. So, is there anyone else that would like to speak from the public? Speak up now.
Hello? Henry Gorenstein?
I'll recognize you in a second.
Okay.
Fred, can you cut off Peter? There you go.
Yeah, I will do.
All right, Henry? Henry, you're ready to go. Go ahead.
Can you hit the line there, please?
Henry?
This is Henry Gorenstein, 9100 Beach. Yeah.
Go ahead, Henry.
Okay. Thank you for the time this past. I was just gonna say that, both tall and both presently permitted under the present zoning, the act of the year, be grossly incompetent and negligent move by the planning board.
Henry, you need to be sworn in, and I can hardly hear you, there's too much background. You need to be sworn in. Leo, would you swear him in?
It's just public comment, we don't need to swear him, he said his address.
Or if an application comes before the planning board for any height variances, it should not be approved or considered.
Henry, you haven't been sworn in yet. He doesn't have to be sworn in.
Potential, any potential proposal is so outrageous to be even considered-
Henry, stop talking. You're not sworn in yet.
...of Consumer Affairs that regulates-
Fred, could you cut these people off?
Society to move forward with this project.
Fred?
All right. All right. Rich, it's just public comment, he doesn't have to be sworn. I can't quite pick up what he's saying, but he doesn't have to be sworn, it's just public comment.
Okay, I just wanted everybody to be quiet. So, Fred, can you put Henry back on the line?
...already mentioned.
Now, go ahead, you talk.
Land is a public park that has received green acres funds over the years to help maintain Lucy. Another study would be a view shed study to learn how the views of her will be impacted to and from her, and to determine how the views of the Atlantic City skyline, and also of her original birthplace, which is in front of, in front of the island house along the beach will be impacted. I also feel there should be a wind study to determine what's called the Beruli Effect on Lucy. The Beruli Effect is actually winds that are created, or stronger winds that are created as they move around a tall building, they're basically amplified and sped up. Another study that should also be required for any master plan update or application to the planning board would be an environmental impact study, should absolutely be required along with any in-depth traffic studies, especially since it looks like some buildings may be built close to the public right-of-ways and not provide the proper required site triangles for safety. Once again, I'll reiterate, by building a high-rise building, you could severely impact a national historic landmark that also sits on a public park that has received public taxpayers' funds to maintain. That you will make that park shadier, more windy, less visible, and less comfortable for its visitors, and will probably lead to Lucy's potential demise, which I hope will never happen. I feel basically it's you, the planning board, and the commissioners, and your consultants, and legal team to basically have the moral obligation and concerns to protect Lucy, and I do mean that seriously, to protect New Jersey's most precious landmark. Thank you very much.
Henry, I would encourage you to please contact or attend the commission meetings where these decisions are being made. Okay, did you hear me?
Hey, Rich?
Yes.
You think we're gonna propose to take eight stories off of the island house to stop those winds?
What I'm saying is, the change that was made by the city commission, and I'm saying, if you have these objections, which sound, he certainly sounds like he knows what he's talking about, and they should be taken to the commission. Next, from the public?
I think that was pretty inappropriate for a commissioner to make a comment like that on a serious matter like this.
I'm not a commissioner, and I don't know what you're talking about.
Not you, sir, but the other gentleman about the eight stories. I mean, that is totally, totally inappropriate.
Your comment, we're anxiously waiting to hear what you have to say. Go ahead, sir. Aaron, please speak. We're now, we would like to hear your opinion.
Well, we've spent two years, where, two years ago, we went to the Board of Commissioners, and in front of 200 people, they told the community that this overlay project, this hotel overlay project, was done, finished.
I was there, I heard the same thing.
Right. And now, you're bringing it back, two months after we're told that the gentleman next door wants to build 110-foot. It's so interesting that 110-
Mr. Singer, please, we are not bringing it back. This is a matter that you need to take to the city commission. The planning board is not bringing this back.
Yeah, okay. And every one of your votes was 9-0. It's very interesting. Thank you very much.
Regarding that, we have not taken a vote, Mr. Singer. What vote are you speaking of? Mr. Singer, what vote are you speaking of?
Every vote you had tonight was 9-0. 9-0. The entire board was 9-0. And your commissioner, who just got up and walked out of the room, sits there and, on a serious matter, makes a comment like that, and it's insulting to the public. It's just my comment, I'm done, I'm done.
Thank you, thank you for it. It was very helpful. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment?
Yes, I'd like to speak.
Eric Stevens, you are recognized.
Okay.
Address, please.
I know you just, what was that?
What's your address, please?
Eric Stevens, you are recognized.
Okay, Eric Stevens, go ahead.
I know a moment ago, somebody said, I think it was you, Rich, that you were at that meeting two years ago where they said they would not bring it back, correct?
Yes.
Well, at that meeting, Commissioner Amadeo repeatedly said that these were based on the recommendations of the planning committee, that they would never bring anything forward that was not recommended by the planning committee. So, I noticed you keep saying, it's not you, it's the commissioners, and yet, when we get in front of them, they're gonna tell us it's the nine of you, okay? We're the ones who recommended that. You do know that, right? Because you were at that meeting, you made the minutes, just like I did.
Yes, I understand what you're saying, I can only speak for the planning board.
Okay, so, the planning board is not recommending that this go through, is that what you're saying?
No. We have not had anything brought before us yet. The city is going to propose, and please bear with me, I don't have the correct terminology, maybe Mr. McLarnin can stick in. The city, the city is going to give us a new ordinance or some, Roger, would you step in here and tell us what we're doing regarding to what the city's doing?
This is Leo. I mean, the ordinance adoption process is, the city would have to introduce an ordinance, the governing body, on first reading, and then by law, they refer to us to determine whether it is, to review it for consistency with the master plan. And then, we send our review back to the governing body, and they can consider it however they want, and then they would act on the ordinance one way or another.
So, Roger, are you saying, since you want to review and make some changes, that massively-
That was the alarm of the committee.
Oh, okay. Because I know Roger was at that meeting two years ago where they said they would absolutely, this was dead. Commissioner Amadeo said it, they all agreed it was dead, they were pulling it, and they were not going to present it again. It was a 10-minute and 10-second minute of your YouTube records. So, it's interesting that Roger's mentioning that they're gonna revisit it after they told a packed room of 300 citizens that they have no intention of revisiting it. You can understand why people maybe don't trust this process.
Absolutely, I understand. And please, I'm not trying to pass the buck, but it was said at their meeting, and I would recommend you take it up at their meeting. I'm not trying to pass the buck here, but that was said at the commission.
Okay, to the gentleman who'd like to take the seven stories off the building next door, tell him to feel free come on over. I'm sure he'd be very helpful for the community.
Okay. Thank you. Next, please.
Hello? Matt Wahlberg? Yes.
Go ahead.
My question is, when is this meeting with the city commissioners that you are recommending that we go to and discuss and so on specifically, so we can all be there?
I don't know, I'm gonna refer that question to Roger McLarnin.
Okay.
I'm not sure when that meeting's gonna be. I'm just giving you a heads-up that it's coming in the future.
Are we talking the near future, are we talking 10 years? There's just no knowledge at all of when the next meeting would be on this subject?
Well, you can attend any meeting you want. The next meeting's July 2nd. You can discuss-
Won't it be on the website, Rich?
Pardon me?
Won't it be on the website?
I'm not sure. I don't attend the city commission meetings, but I would certainly, if I was interested, would pay attention to it. And it's available, and you could call Johanna Casey at City Hall. She's the city clerk, and she could tell you when the meetings are and what the agenda is for those meetings.
Thank you, Joanna Casey at City Hall.
Yes, she's the city clerk.
Thank you for an answer, sir.
No problem, Mr. Wahlberg. Next, anyone from the public? Fran Sal, or Fran? All right, public portion is closed. And Roger, any other business?
Uh, no.
Roger?
No, 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 no new business.
Okay, I want to hear a motion to adjourn the meeting? I'll make a motion.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Hi. Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.